Okay, I will call the May first Select Board meeting to order. As a preliminary matter, I, the Chair, Don Holgate, I'm going to confirm that members are present and can hear me. I will go through the board members as I see them. Um, Kristy Ferentzela.
Here.
Um, Matt Feingold.
Here.
Jason Bridges.
Here.
Okay, we are just waiting on Rita to log back in, so I'll hold off. Um, and then we have a number of staff present, Erica Mooney.
Present.
Michael Cosort.
Here.
Libby Gibson.
Present.
Paul Murphy.
Present.
Brian Turbot.
Present.
William Pittman.
Present.
Jeff Carlson.
Present.
Roberto Santa Maria.
Present.
Leslie Snell.
Present.
Okay, and we have um, some, some guests as well, Stephen Visco, Chairman of the Board of Health.
Present.
And Greg Corbo from Town Council.
Present.
Okay, and then
Beth Hallett is just coming on.
Beth Hallett joining us. The um, de- de- um, is it de- Deputy Superintendent? Um, and Rita Higgins, can you hear me now? Yeah, I see you now.
Yep, I can hear you now, yeah.
Okay, we've got everybody. Mm-hmm. Um, good afternoon. This open meeting of the Nantucket Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which is, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. We are being televised by NCTV-18, and we are also available on YouTube. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation. However, we will be affording public participation via YouTube. I will alert people when I turn on public comment, and um, you will need to refresh your screen to be able to make comments. Please keep those comments specific to the agenda item and, and refrain from commenting back and forth to each other in the feed. Keep it directed towards the board and things that we can answer. And if we don't get to answer all of your questions, we will get back to them. For this meeting, we're convening via video conference using the Zoom app, which is posted on the town website, and this also identifies how the public can join, which I just mentioned. Our meeting materials are posted, um, as, as they usually are on the town website under Select Boards, um, with our agenda and packet. Um, we will, um, I, I will recognize board members as we go through. If people could raise their hands, that's the most helpful way of doing it, and I will, um, will call on you as appropriate, and recognize, um, people during different agenda items that, that they are in charge of. I think that covers everything. We will be doing all of our votes by roll call. And I will go through the board members in the order in which I see them. So with that all being done, let me go back to my agenda. Um, our announcements are the select words being video and audio recorded. And then we move on to the Town Manager's Report. I will recognize Libby Gibson, and then I believe Brian Turbot will be going through our options.
Thank you. So we've been working on potential issue, what, what the potential issues might be for fiscal 2021. We've reported out to the board a couple of times. And this presentation, which Brian is going to take us through, Finance Director, is um, more detailed than I think what you have seen so far. The, um, for the purposes of tonight, what we wanted to do was take you through the remainder of fiscal 20, and then some different scenarios that we have developed for 21. And some of the options that we have discussed that we could put into place to address some revenue gaps that we are likely to see in 21. Um, we are, I guess, tonight really looking for any board feedback or comment, and then we will come back to you in a week or two, probably more like two weeks, with specific recommendations. Um, Brian, do you want to take us through?
Sure, um, thank you very much. So, um, on page two of the presentation, we actually started with fiscal 21. Um, just to kind of give, on the, the green column, the original budget, as we had done at the December presentation to the board, was uh, projecting a hundred and five million, five hundred and ninety-four thousand. Obviously, as things have kind of evolved through this um, COVID-19 situation, we, we know that there's going to be some changes, so we've tried to look at them and project them at varying um, change levels. We started initially looking at, okay, what does a thirty percent reduction look like? And we took down motor vehicle excise tax um, from the original budget, because at the point that we started putting this together, the collections were not going to be anywhere near between prior year and current year, anywhere near the 2.9. They looked like they would probably fall around 2.475 million. We then looked at rooms excise, and we originally budgeted four million, and at a thirty percent reduction, that's 1.2 million, and we brought that down to 2.8. Did the same thing with meals to 701,000. Some of these, as we looked at them, they were pretty much in line with where we had thought, especially with penalties and interest and taxes. Um, we looked at fees, which the two largest fees within, generated within that particular grouping of um, revenue sources is um, plumbing and um, electrical permits, and wiring permits. So we took those down by um, collectively, the two of those um, from their total, which originally were budgeted at um, I think, 200,000 and 150,000 respectively. We took them down by the thirty percent, which led us to the 793,000. Rentals includes the three concession stands, and in the original initial discussion, we said, okay, well, if they can't open in any, on time, or there's a delayed opening, is there a consideration for potentially a rent, uh, rent reduction for, for one of the payments? So we factored that in a thirty percent reduction. Um, and then in licenses and permits, the largest reduction there is thirty percent to the building permit line item. And in that category, we left state aid alone, and that would have gave us a projection of just over 103 million, which is approximately, is about 2.5 million dollars short of where we had originally built the budget on. We then kind of went through the next two, which are forty and sixty percent reductions. They go along the same basic premise that we reduced the categories that I talked about, exclusive of motor vehicle excise by the forty percent, by forty percent to get to those numbers. Given where motor vehicle excise taxes are, i- and given the way the state has indicated, we are, can continue to be allowed to budget for local estimated receipts, it was appropriate for me to bring that down a little bit further, because collections are, have slowed a little bit, and um, we're not entirely, we don't think we'll get past the 2.275 at this point. So all told, at a forty percent reduction, we're looking at 3,409,000 reduction, 3,409,000 dollar reduction, or being able to raise 102,185,000. We use the same methodology at a sixty percent reduction, which um, as you can see at the bottom, projects a four-point, almost 4.7 million dollar reduction, or 100,895,000 that we can raise in revenue. And then, kind of tried to project what I would assume, or say would, might be the absolute worst-case scenario, which is continuing with rooms and meals at 1.6 million, the same motor vehicle excise tax. Um, rentals being the concessions, um, as consistent with the forty and sixty percent reduction, we assume in this that they just, they're not going to be able to open in any meaningful way, and we may have to waive their rent for the entire season. Building permits are reduced by six hundred, by six, the same sixty percent um, in this, as well as, we assume here that meals and excise tax, that restaurants may not be able to open in a meaningful way that produces much in the way of rooms tax. So in this scenario, we have eliminated it in entirety, which subsequently also means that we took down, um, in the fees, we took, also took down from that, we took liquor, um, liquor and entered common victualer fees. Uh, we reduced those to account for potentially not having a meaningful restaurant season in any way, shape, or form over the summer season. We also, because during this um, time, we had heard that the legislature may end up having to reduce state aid. So we took state aid down by um, 854,000 dollars to, um, at that point, which is a twenty-two percent reduction, which is actually consistent with the way, maybe a couple percentage points higher than some people are doing it, but most people are planning for about a twenty percent reduction in state aid um, into fiscal 21. And what we've labeled as catastrophic would mean that we'd be able to raise 99,458,000, which would be a revenue shortfall of just under 6.2 million dollars, potentially for fiscal 21. If we go, and some of the things that we're going to talk about um, with fiscal 20 current unknowns also do roll into fiscal 21. So on page three of the presentation, we kind of lay out a little bit of um, fiscal 20. And before I get into that, I just would like to let everybody on the, the presentation know, and the board know, that last week, last Thursday, we had a, um, a ratings call with Moody's, because we are going to be issuing some debt. We actually, because of the delay in town meeting, we have to roll over some of the debt that we had actually planned on ex- ex- uh, extinguishing, either through the general fund or the airport. Um, and so we had our ratings call, and the ratings was, the credit opinion was released last week, or, excuse me, it was released yesterday, my apologies. And we have maintained our AAA credit rating and our stable outlook at this point. So they, there was no ratings change to us. We did discuss some of um, what we foresee happening in fiscal 21, and they were comfortable, and, and they're still comfortable with the management and the uh, operations of the town, so there was no change to our rating. Which is a very positive thing at this, a- as we go through this. So some of the things that we're really kind of looking at in, also in 20, which we'll talk about in 21, as well as um, our enterprise front operations, solid waste. Given the, the building moratorium and in the, the work stoppage, um, there is the, a slow um, decline in the amount of revenue that we're collecting, which will potentially impact us this year, and, and it will certainly impact us potentially as we budget next year, based on the way the state allows us to budget for those types of user fees. Um, we're actively working and trying to understand how that is um, going to play out. I don't think it will be a extremely large problem, given the fact that we also do have, um, coupled with a, a decline in revenue, we have some decline in the amount of expenditures that we're incurring relative to the operations um, at the solid waste facility. Our Island Home is, you know, it's always one of the things that we're concerned about as we go through every fiscal year. Uh, I will say that revenue is up, given the fact that there's been a, a patient mix change, and we have more private pay patients that we had anticipated, which is driving the revenue up, which is um, is a positive there. Um, we certainly have some additional increased costs that we're, we're working with, and we're working through with them, but I think that Island Home will end up on fiscal 20 on, on a solid footing. I should note that we didn't necessarily put the general fund in here, because our review of the general fund, well, I think that some categories, um, particularly related to property tax may suffer, or we may feel the impact of a timing difference. It's not going to present a significant challenge to the operations. As of March 31st, we had already exceeded our local estimated receipts budget by almost 1.9 million dollars. So that's a very good thing when we look to build um, for fiscal 21. And property taxes, the state doesn't look at as a revenue deficit. So I think from a, a standpoint, operational standpoint, fiscal 21 and the general fund is going, will end up in a very stable position for us. Um, some of the other unknowns, NRTA operations. Um, any deficit, we believe if they were to incur one, would most likely be able to be dealt with on the fiscal 22 cherry sheet. Although I have talked to the um, the administrator, and I believe that there is going to be some CARES Act money that will be available to them that was allocated and carved out for regional transit, transit authorities. So um, her conversations with me don't, and we don't believe it's going to be, there will be a major problem, but there's still two months left in the fiscal year to go. The Steamship Authority potential deficit, we've highlighted here. Um, any deficit there would be on a calendar year basis, so it would be something we would have to consider and work towards solving more into fiscal 21 than for June 30th. And any COVID-19 response expenditures, uh, we will be applying for any and all available funding through MEMA and FEMA, but all of those types of re- monies are all on a reimbursable basis, so we're incurring the expenses upfront, and we have been identifying them, and we'll be segregating them into their own fund, but we will have to ensure that through the general fund that any general fund expenditures are covered um, before the end of the year. Some of the actions that town administration has taken um, through the remaining portion of fiscal 20, we've um, halted non-essential spending to, and essentially asked departments to only spend for things that need to keep the lights on and the doors and the operations going, or COVID-19-related expenditures. We have frozen any non-essential unfilled positions that um, still remained unfilled at this point in fiscal 20 as a way to try to really maintain and get a handle on where we're, where we're going to end up at this point. On the fourth slide, and take you down to the fourth slide, which is really deals kind of with the, what we had talked about on the first slide, uh, outstanding items and current unknowns. Um, into fiscal 21, we have been doing this in fiscal 20. We need to continue to make an investment into IET infrastructure in terms of laptops and other meeting technologies, so that we can continue to um, continue to have as efficient of town operations as possible as we navigate what appears to be a new normal for a period of time. Uh, again, into 21, the state of NRTA operations, strictly from the fact about ridership and what those levels look like, and any potential issues with an operational deficit. Again, if there was anything there, we believe it would be able to be dealt with in the fiscal 23 cherry sheet. Um, fiscal 21, as I mentioned previously, is where we would have to deal with any Steamship Authority potential deficit that would happen based on their fiscal year-end on December 31st. Our Island Home, just, you know, um, we've talked about this even in the, during the presentation in, in December. Certainly, it's a, it's a critical um, function that we provide, and it's always a, it's always um, a challenge to make, ensure that the funding is uh, at the level that we need to, to continue to make sure the operations um, are stable and, and can provide those services. So we're continuing to look at that budget and their revenue, and, and, and trying to ascertain, ascertain, excuse me, whether they need any additional funding at a future town meeting um, for those budget operations. Fiscal 21, any additional funding for enterprise funds? We have the airport on here. Um, but we have been notified, and I have had discussions with both the finance manager and the airport director, that they have had preliminary notification of an award from the CARES Act. I think there was actually an article in the paper. They are actually working very hard through all the details on what the award entails, and trying to confirm what the amount of the award is. I've had at least three conversations about that. And I do believe at this point, um, presuming that the funding remains at the level that was initially reported, that they will, there won't be any initial funding that would be needed from a general fund subsidy or transfer to them, but it is something that we're monitoring, and, and um, we hope doesn't actually need to happen. Solid waste, as I've mentioned, given a decre- depressed revenues potentially in fiscal 20 will certainly impact how much revenue we can res- we can raise. So it's something that we're monitoring and, and working actively with DOR on, on what they're, what they may or may not be willing to allow communities to do in, in budgeting for these user fees. State aid is a concern. Um, as I mentioned, that we have, I've heard preliminarily from a couple people that they're, they think it may be cut, so we're, we've taken that into account. Again, any ongoing COVID-19 response expenditures would certainly be part of any uh, FEMA or MEMA applications that we make for eligible expenditures. We would still have to cover them, those in the 21 budget, and then ultimately get reimbursed for them. Um, as I've mentioned, fees, licenses, and leases are certainly a concern. You know, building permits, plumbing and wiring inspection fees. The concessions are um, a concern on whether they're going to be able to open and what that may look like. And I know that that may be a discussion that the board has at another meeting, um, but it's something that, all of these types of things have actually been, impact has been partially factored into these revenue calculations um, as the starting basis to do that. There's also a concern uh, with some special revenue funds, which do fund some of our programs and some of the initiatives. Um, the Beach Revolver funds lifeguards, ferry embarkation fee funds CSOs. Um, so there is some concern about what level of revenue we are going to see next year, um, and how we may have to um, backfill that um, to continue those programs. The ambulance reserve um, is a concern, but I don't know that we would have a big problem, because that's based on you, on ambulance runs. So it is something that we're, we're monitoring just to make sure, because we do have about $700,000 worth of employee and operational expenses that go through there. Um, and then there's a concern, one of the other concerns is the revolving funds specifically for the airport, because their fuel revolver um, currently is at 4 million dollars, and they were going to ask to, they would like to be able to lower it, but the only provision to do that is through town meeting. So um, that, that's a concern in terms of the amount of money that may be transferred into their operating budget, and, and we're talking and working through that with them. On slide five, um, I think we all need, we all understand that next this summer, and potentially in the next year, it's certainly not going to be, be business as usual. Some of the things that still need to be discussed, our children's beach activities. Um, I think the fireworks have probably been decided already by the time I finished putting this together. Um, but seasonal staffing and housing for lifeguards, CSOs, and any other additional seasonal staff is certainly going to um, is an outstanding item in a current unknown about how we're going to effectively do that and, and manage um, in, in the different environment. So on slide six is um, some of the discussions that we've had internally, that I've had internally with the town administration, the town manager, is one of the things that we would be able to do, or we could consider doing, is we could remove the free cash spending from Article 10, all of the capital. That would get us about 5.9, 5.938 million dollars. We currently are also, as we're having this discussion, we are going through all of the prior capital balances to see if there's any unexpended balances we could reappropriate back to some of those capital projects. We can remove or reduce the free cash transfers to stabilization. If we were to remove them entirely, it would, it would bring back to be able to deploy it in some other manner, just about 3 million dollars in, in free cash. We are able to potentially consider a one-year freeze on the contribution to the OPEB trust fund. If you call on the warrant every year through the reason appropriate mechanism, we raised 500,000 dollars, which goes into the OPEB trust fund. Um, I will, Moody's, I will tell you, did ask about whether we were going to do this, and I did not let them know that it was an option that, and if it were to be something we chose to do, it would be for a one-year time period, and that we would look to get back on track in fiscal 22. With the free cash that we brought back, we could use it to cover the potential to budget shortfall in fiscal 21. Um, we could use it to help backfill some of the, any enterprise fund issues, and, and use it to fill, um, and backfill the revenue, projected revenue shortfall in the general fund. Some of the other options are elimination of the unfilled positions into fiscal 21. That would have the purpose of not only eliminating the position, but any subsequent health insurance projection that we had with that position. Possible furloughs and/or possible layoffs, which would both require discussions and interactions and, and um, agreements with the unions. And then service and program level reductions or double A'd implementations are all options that we would be able, we would consider as we, we navigate it through, um, trying to fill or to rebalance the budget based on a, a projected shortfall in revenue. So I'd be happy to answer any questions um, from the board if they have any.
Um, Erica, can you take the, the screen view off so I can see everybody?
Um, I don't really, I don't personally really have any questions, but I do have kind of my, my items that, that I think are the best way to get at this. Um, and I mean, I, my, my first choices of, of how to deal with this is to not fund the stabilization fund or the OPEB for one year, and um, and to eliminate the unfilled positions. I think that those are kind of the paths of least resistance. Um, and then I think we could look at what capital, but I think maybe we should go through all of those and, and see what, what might be more critical than others before we just eliminate the entire article. But um, does anybody else, Matt? You're muted. You're still muted.
All right, there we go. I've been through this before, how we going to define uh, non-essential services?
We have been through it before too. And non-essential services typically would be things that don't directly relate to the operation of the government. Um, like maybe, for example, children's beach seasonal programming, and other programs like that, that don't directly contribute to the operation of government.
Hello? All right. Yeah, okay, I'm ba- back. Uh, yeah, just, I think, I'm not sure, I think, I'd like to look at the capital and sort of, sort of what Dom was saying. Uh, I kind of, I think, you know, we're, how do we say it? We, there's things that are essential that, you know, some, sometimes we let them go, like, you know, HTC or lifeguards or certain positions. I think that we should be trying to keep as many people, if not everybody, hired, and figure out how to share, you know, share some of it if necessary, through, you know, in, in a fair way. And so how we do that, you know, we've discussed this, how we do that, I would like to, you know, have that be factored into this. Uh, the OPEB is pretty important for our rating. You know, if we skip it for a year, fine, but I worry that if we skip it, we won't fund it again the next year. And it's really important for the retirees and for our credit rating. So I, I, there's things like that, that uh, you know, I'd like to get a little more granularity on some of this to know how we're going to handle it.
Oh, um, Brian and Jason both raised their hand, maybe Brian then Jason?
Um, so just to that point, uh, Matt, we, Moody's did ask that question, and we defined what we might do if it was something, and um, the comment back from them was it was something that we would expect a community to do, given so much uncertainty. Um, and we did tell them, because I truly believe that we're on the right path, and we're one of the few communities funding uh, into it at that level, that it is something that would be for a one-year purpose, and it would not be something that we would get back to, at least not from a recommendation standpoint from me to the town, town administration.
Jason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, can you remind me what the uh, OPEB, what that would be for one year, Brian? And also, do you have an idea of the freezing of current unfilled positions? If that was to go through all, through fiscal uh, 21, what that number would be?
So the OPEB is um, in the budget this year is a 500,000 dollar raise, which has been consistent with how much we've raised on an annual basis for the last five, six years that I've, since I've been here. Um, as far as the, the one thing that I admittedly didn't do before I got here tonight was um, all of the unfilled positions. Um, but it's well in excess of probably 300 or 400,000 dollars, given some of the levels of those positions.
Rita?
Um, just a quick question, I think that's um, what you suggested, Don, is um, is a good start, just with a caveat that if there's any unfilled positions that would be essential, that we wouldn't, I don't know if there are, but um, just to not take those out.
Yeah, I would agree with that, but I would just like to see positions not filled prior to elimination of any positions. I would, I think that that would be more of a last resort. Matt, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I, and, you know, and that's fine, but sometimes, you know, I think that we're in a uh, we're in uncharted territory. I think some of this, you know, some of the budget, the future budgets are, you know, wage, wage increases and things, and I think that we should be putting, you know, we shouldn't be afraid of discussing some of that with the various unions, because I, I've talked to a lot of these people, they don't want to be working with no staff around them. They don't, you know, there's a certain level of uh, you know, of services that is necessary. There's a certain level of backup. We shouldn't be afraid of having that discussion with the individual unions. I think that, you know, most would understand the situation that we're facing. I, I think that we're more likely to be in that 40, 50 percent uh, you know, bracket or worse. I think there's going to be people having a hard time paying their taxes. I think there's going to be a lot of fallout from this for, you know, for three to five years. And I think that we need to be taking a three-year look and, and look under every stone, not be afraid to tackle things that might be hard.
Kristy?
Yeah, I agree with you, Don, that I think starting with those um, the first three recommendations of OPEB stabilization and not hiring. Um, but I'm just also wondering, how much would that co- um, catch us up to the potential deficit, Brian?
I think we still have to look at um, cutting some capital, but Brian, how much is it without capital cuts?
So, I mean, if we took back the free cash So I mean, if we took back the free cash just on that, that would give us just about. Just around nine point eight, nine point five million dollars that we could use to deploy in various, just from the capital itself. And the reason that I have proposed. That I proposed to town administration to consider elimination of capital in from free cash in its entirety in this fiscal budget is because. We do have enterprise funds that we may need to provide additional funding for. And we don't have the levy capacity to provide additional funding without these potential changes. So the goal is to make sure that the operations can continue in in some manner. Without drastic cuts to not only the general fund, but to the. To the enterprise funds. So that is why I propose the entire capital, which would give us, like I said, about nine point five million dollars to deploy. There's a discussion that I'm sure that town administration we need to have, which is around the one time expenditures of about a million dollars in the general fund budget. Which essentially would give us all of the free cash back to use to try to figure out and solve these projected revenue issues and. Truthfully, maybe also needed to fund some of these positions that that Matt had mentioned or programs being, you know, the lifeguards be or or CSOs because if. We're not entirely sure what the travel to the island is going to look like, very embarkation fee has typically provided over two hundred thousand dollars worth of funding on an annual basis. For the CSO program. If we don't think we're going to reach that level, we have to find it somewhere. And one of the ways that. I have talked to the town manager about is maybe an allocation of free cash on a one year basis if we think that. Into fiscal twenty, the start of the summer of twenty one may look better. So there's a lot of. The free cash and I do agree about the capital, but it may be needed to continue to some of these programs and services that. Are funded by revolving funds, we may have to look to fund them in a different this this way on a temporary short time basis.
I I think the question was also what, aside from the capital, what what's the total? If we didn't fund stabilization, OPEB or unfilled positions?
Well, so the stabilization was from free cash, so that would just be added back to that total. If you didn't fund OPEB, it's just five hundred thousand. And there was one in the in the in in the operating budget that we would gain back. And there is one other thing that we could consider doing, which I think I inadvertently didn't put in here, which was the. The one percent capital from the local estimate, the from prior year receipts that was is raised and appropriated. That's another million dollars that we we could. Reallocate if necessary to to fill this, which would reduce the 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 reliance on free cash to solve some of this as well.
Okay.
Does that answer your question for for you? Okay.
Take care of that. I would, one of our biggest worries is is the airport in terms of enterprise funds, right?
It is. It it's a worry because I think they're projecting a very drastic reduction in in traffic. And and I've been talking to the airport at least once a day. For the last month and I've gone over and and looked at the with the finance managers' projections and. They certainly, from my limited knowledge of their entire operation, they they look reasonable and. There is an expectation that they are going to get some level of CARES Act money. Which the paper a couple of weeks ago said it was six million dollars. And if it were to be that six million dollar level, then I believe it would, it would not necessitate a need. From an additional subsidy or 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 increase for or something from the town.
Thank you. Jason, did you, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just for Brian. So we have around ten million dollars in free cash and that we're in a really, really great position. I think we all need to be truly lucky that we have a three A. Rating that's still there and these options to do with free cash stabilization fund. There's probably a lot of towns that don't have. These options. So I just want to say that's, you know, we're, we're in a good position. But Brian, for free cash, I've always heard like it's always a one time thing, one time thing, one time thing. Does that affect us, anything going further in year two, year three? If there's, if we're down twenty, thirty percent over the next three years. Overall.
It certainly, it affects us. Initially, from my perspective, if and potentially in the delay of capital projects that we would normally fund from it. I think this year we, when we get to certify free cash for twenty one, I think we were still headed for a positive, another number. I don't know that it would be ten point three million, but I think it would still be good. I think that. Having this luck, I also call it a luxury of having this kind of free cash and the ability of these reserves and be able to do this is is certainly a blessing for the town to be able to do and. If you recall, when we did the the presentations and one of the focuses of having free cash and the reserves like this is certainly the the rating agencies like it. They do have an expectation that this is one of the first types of situations that we would deploy in this method is to use it. As far as a two or three year problem, I think that the problem is going to be with free cash more than anything being the one time that we do is that, you know, we had tried to get money into stabilization, which is is a goal of ours. As well as the capital. I think the capital is the area that will be the the longest. To recover because these projects will then be put into twenty two and we're gonna, you know, on top of a potential additional needs. But we are in unprecedented times and it is something that as part of the financial policies that we developed is an option available to us if we needed to deploy it on a limited time basis.
Phil Cozart.
Madam Chair, I don't know if this is the time for me to jump in and tell you what the schools are doing. At this point. But our twenty twenty one fiscal year budget is determined by several factors. Obviously, the appropriation provided by the town of Nantucket and. We're familiar with the different scenarios that Brian has been running. And as a result of those scenarios, we're running our own scenarios that I'll reference in a minute. But in addition to the appropriation and maybe to Matt Fee's point, collective bargaining agreements in place. Are certainly something that we're looking at and we're presently negotiating with the teachers. Unit. So that can play a role in this. And I think the third piece that perhaps. Nobody wants to talk about is what will education look like in September? Because that's going to have an effect on what we do or what we don't do moving forward. So we have developed three levels of cuts, mild, moderate, severe. Similar, I guess, to what Brian is, the scenarios that Brian is creating. The the mild are things like replacing retiring more expensive teachers with younger, less expensive teachers. Not filling certain new teaching positions that are not as required as others and. And likewise, not filling new or retiring teacher assistant positions. But then the second level starts to go a little bit further into staffing. And the third is what we call severe and catastrophic, I guess, is what Brian is referencing and. And that would have. Obviously, a a greater effect. We we don't know what chapter seventy funds coming will look like, but. Our three levels of cuts, our scenarios are pretty much two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred thousand and a million. And we certainly hope that we're not looking at that million dollar scenario, but. We're doing our due diligence and we'll be meeting, I know, again next week with Brian and Libby and. We've been communicating right along. And so once we have a target, we will. We will do our part. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you need any more direction from us tonight? Or is it, okay?
No, I think we really just wanted to get your reactions to some of the options that we or the options that we put forward and see if you had any questions. So we're gonna work to come up with some more specifics in our recommendations, like I said, in the next two or three weeks.
Jason, then Rita, then Matt.
Libby, will the capital program committee be meeting to, let's say, the board or we we decide to do the stabilization fund three million and then. We're looking for another two or three. Will the capital program committee come in? And do you need that? Guidance there at all?
We already did have a meeting with them two or three weeks ago, maybe it's more like three weeks ago. And we were reviewing this exact situation. I don't think they really had too many comments. It's more the departments that we wanted to get input from as to the priority and what's specific. You know, what really needs to be done and what could, what could wait? And I think most of what we're talking about are things that could wait.
Rita.
I just wanted to mention that we've all. Brought up in previous meetings that some of our concerns have to do with the sort of the collateral damage of. Of the virus and the lockdown. And I know we're talking about, you know, where we're gonna, how we're gonna. Basically cut back on everything, but I think we should at least keep in mind that. We might need to consider reallocation of some funds towards health and human services. Whether it's through the various organizations that deal with that. The Department of Health and their work with childcare, whatever it is, I just think that priorities may shift over the next twelve months. The school might have some input on that. That while we're trying to cut things back, we may also need to reprioritize some things.
Thank you. Matt.
Yeah, I think I just to Rita's point, that's a very good point. Nantucket food, fuel and rental assistance handed out six hundred and fifty bags of food last week. So there's going, there's a need currently. I'm not sure that's going away for a while and. Michael, Michael Cozart said, you know, sort of explained my sort of thought on this better than I did, and I thank him. Those are hard discussions to have and those are hard choices to make. And the town may, we may feel like we're not in that because we have the free cash, but we are. And so I think they should be on the table. One question I had is. Have we, like, have we looked at, you know, when this all started, did we look at what's the cost of furloughing? You know, and so people understand, am I, I have a pretty simplistic understanding of it is. People get unemployment and their benefits, et cetera, are still intact. And so is, you know, have we looked at that, what the cost is to the town budget? To do that, say this goes on and we have to.
We have looked at furloughing, yes. And it may or may not be something we work into our recommendations, but we have discussed it.
And and what's, how what, how does it compare to, you know? Is there a savings? Is there, is there twenty percent savings, fifty percent savings? What's the?
Brian could maybe speak a bit more to it, but it's not, first of all, we'd have to decide what groups of employees are going to be furloughed. There is a bargaining obligation. Benefits continue, so it's strictly salaries. I think we, we, we're not talking like millions of dollars here. We're, we're probably. Not talking even much more than. Roughly half a million, maybe, depending on how long we go. That would be a maximum amount of time. I think that might have been around a. One or two week time, Brian, that number.
I've modeled it essentially. Calculating how much per day on the general fund on the town side operations and. We've modeled that out over a specific period of days, but to the town manager's point. That that modeling still needs to account for whether it's going to be how we're going to approach it for various levels of employees and and how it would work. But it is something that we're taking into account. I can tell you that it's not going to save, it not going to save more than probably. Memory serves me right now, probably it won't save more than three hundred thousand dollars if we did it for a period of time, unless we did it for an extensively long period of time. It's not going to save, it will allow us to redirect some money, but it isn't. It's not huge dollars that we would be saving. Depending on the length of time that it it the it was implemented for.
Matt, did you have a follow up?
Yeah, just a quick follow up. It, I know for, there's a, for. For eight weeks, there could be an extra six hundred dollars on unemployment. Is that, is that still? Possible for town employees? Are they under the same program or no?
We would have to look into it and I admittedly don't know all the ins and outs of it, but typically in unemployment, if you're working a portion of the time, the benefit is is adjusted a little bit. So. It's all something that would have to be factored into how how this would be done, but we have looked at. We've looked at it over us, you know, from one days to to a length of time, just calculating a per day savings. But in a minimal scenario, it doesn't, it wouldn't save more than three hundred thousand.
But also the unemployment, I don't believe would apply to people on furlough because they're still employed.
No, that that would, that would be something to check. But the reason I'm asking about the six hundred is the six hundred makes some position, people. You know, who are unemployed and maybe it doesn't come with furlough, we have to look, are doing as well or. Then when they were employed. And so that was one, that's part of why I'm bringing it up and it's up to eight weeks. So. You don't need to beat this dead horse.
Even people working part time are getting granted that six hundred dollars. So some, some people are doing better. Than when they're actually employed full time at the moment, but but only for a certain period of time. But I also to Rita's point, which I think is a very valid one, our community is going to need, need relief throughout and. And as time goes on, things actually get more difficult, you know, people blow through money that they had saved and so forth. But I do know that Health and Human Services and the Finance Committee have been working on a pretty significant grant. I don't know where that's at, but I was. But I think it was something in the tune of a million dollars, which could go a long way towards. Health and Human Services issues. But any, any other questions, comments? Shall we move on to the next agenda item? I think that the this school superintendent, you don't have to stick around if you don't want to. And thanks. Brian, I don't know if you, if you need to for any of the rest of the stuff, but whatever, whatever works for everybody. We are moving on to, are there any select board comments or questions related to COVID nineteen to start off with before we move into the other items? Okay, then I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna open public comment yet. Discussion regarding Senator Sierra's letter for seasonal community guidance. I believe that this already went out. So is it a little bit of a moot point now or do we want to discuss that? Anybody? Matt?
Yeah, I. I I reached out to Senator Sierra today and just asked if he had any guidance further than the. You know, the the sixteenth or fourteenth, the middle of May that the date is, and he hadn't, they don't have that yet. I still think, so you know, I thought the letter was fine as it was, but people are really asking. Especially, you know, sort of, especially sort of tourism stuff, short term rentals, hotels are really asking for guidance. They can't plan. Without knowing, like the restaurants have a good idea what's coming. You know, a lot of the, you know, retail has a good idea. I think some of these other industries don't, and that's really, really important.
Yeah, I I know that the date currently is the eighteenth and hopefully we'll have more of an update coming sometime next week as they, that. Committee of seventeen that Wendy is a part of works through some of these details. But do we want to make any kind of a formal action in regard to Senator Sierra's letter or it's out? So do we just leave it at that? Kristy?
Yeah, when I talked to Julian today or yesterday, we could still sign on if we wanted to, even after it was distributed. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels about signing on. But I think a regional letter, it's it's worth being a part of.
It's pretty consistent with the the math, the clarified message that we put out, I believe. What does everyone think? Do we want to take an action? Matt?
I'll move, I'll move. We sign the letter.
Sir, a second?
Second.
I'm gonna go by roll call. Kristy Carantella.
Aye.
Matt Tate.
Aye.
Using Bridges.
Aye.
Rita Higgins.
Aye.
John Holgate, aye, that's unanimous. So we will move on to emergency order. So we will move on to emergency orders, number five and six. I will start with number five. I will open public comments as the board starts to discuss. And, and people will need to refresh if they want to write in. And who will be monitoring today, Libby?
If you want me to give it a try, I can.
Okay, that'd be great.
Just give me one, well, keep going, but I just need to.
As questions start, come in. Leslie, did you, do you want to present the draft on number five? I know we've got Board of Health, Board of Health Director and Chairman of the Board of Health here.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. The, the version of the order that you all discussed on Wednesday would open up any construction related to any building permit that was issued prior to March 20th, and for which construction commenced. Obviously, that has to be in compliance with the governor's order. It would also increase the number of workers on a site from four to eight. I know the draft in your packet had some additional changes that did not come from plus. So I think someone else should probably go over those.
The addition in your packet came from a thought of town admin to clarify what was being asked by the board on Wednesday about the difference between the state order and the revised phase, and the new, the Phase Two, the proposed Phase Two. So it was adding in the exact language from the state order. And in talking with Greg Corbo, where, where did he just go? Sorry, there just gets to be a lot of people on here. There was, there was a, some, I guess, discussion at the board meeting about what projects specifically are or are not allowed under the state order. So the thinking was, should we put some in? And that is obviously going to totally be up to the Board of Health with input from the Select Board. So put them in, don't put them in, but the idea was to just clarify what is and is not allowed. More specifically with the state language that exists today.
Greg, did you have any comments on that?
I, I agree with, with Libby's assessment. You know, my understanding was that there was some confusion as to what was the difference between the orders being proposed for Nantucket versus the orders that are in place currently for the state. So we thought it would be beneficial to just paste right into your order the state's definition of what constitutes essential construction. We thought that that way there, there would be much less confusion as to what could be allowed and what could not be allowed.
I think that there was a big question on the, on some interpretations in regard to like open pool construction that's causing a safety hazard. And the building commissioner's interpretation of that, I see Matt has his hand up.
I, I was gonna say, I've seen some emails going around today, and it's, like, still is quite a bit of confusion. I'm not sure I'm happy, I spoke to epidemiologists and trying to put a group together now. And, you know, sort of speaking to them has me very hesitant to go, you know, to really open this up too much more. Until, you know, A, till I understand who, that people are all on the same page. And B, you know, going from four to eight is fairly substantial. I just think we've, you know, we have, sort of, we, we have a chance to, we've been really good. We have a chance to sort of lead us and be leaders and keep the virus, you know, sort of flat and not let this peak. The epidemiologists are basically saying that it's not a question of if, it's when. And it's gonna happen, that, you know, we are 30 to 45 days behind Boston, not equal to them. It will, of course, will be how severely we're impacted. And so I think that we, you know, some of these things are great, but I, I hope that we're following sort of science, you know, science and risk analysis, not what we or our constituents, you know, politics or greed or fear. I don't want to be following those. I want to be following science and risk analysis.
Roberto and I had a conversation earlier today about, I don't know if you had a chance to get any data on whether any spread in Massachusetts has been attributed to construction? Because construction is a lot more active than it is here elsewhere.
So I couldn't get any exact information on the demographics because I don't, I don't have access to that part of Maven. I thought, I thought I did, but I don't. We would have to put in a full request to the state epidemiologist's office to get that demographic data, what they're, what they do, when they do it, where they do it. But I was able to get some of the state numbers on the cases as well as the deaths. And one of the things that is kind of surprising to me is when we started looking at the data today, and I did speak with the same group that Matt was talking to about. And we're looking to set up some sort of mod, modeling presentation and literature review, some surveillance data. And the preliminary surveillance data from the state is actually really kind of surprising that when you look at it, Massachusetts hasn't reached its peak yet. And it's really kind of surprised, that I was really surprised to see that. Especially when I did the death rate proportion, where deaths in Massachusetts are actually 5.7% of all the cases, which is double what we're seeing nationally. So I, I agree with what Matt was talking about, and I think risk analysis is actually something we really need to do. When I was talking to Dr. White today and Dr. Jones and some of the people on the other epidemiology group, there is some modeling that, that needs to be done to really understand what our, what our risk here is on Nantucket. And it might actually be higher than we thought.
Rita and Jason?
I think it would also be relevant to look at our industries and compare, when we're, if we're going to try and compare ourselves and bring ourselves to state guidelines, compare sort of the numbers in each industry state. Because I think ours, our tourism and construction, based on some of the other, the, I know this is going way back, but one of the comprehensive plans. And I don't know that construction rates in the top three or five is an industry within the state. So I, I don't know how, I think that's, that's something that we should factor into whatever we model in terms of how we make some of these decisions about whether to align ourselves with the state's construction guidelines or whether we're different. And I think that was sort of an intuitive decision when we decided to be stricter than the state is intuitively, construction. There's probably per capita, there's more people in construction here than many other places in the state. So I think we should keep that in mind as we, as we decide what to do.
And there's definitely some modeling to be done, and I'll bring that information back to the, back to the group that's going to be helping us with all of this. I assume that some of them are probably watching, so they'll probably be crunching some numbers right now. Or trying to find some data sources, but absolutely, that is something we need to look into.
How is this group being established? And is this going through town administration? Because this is the first I'm really hearing of a group being established.
So actually, what ended up happening was I got an, I got a email from Matt asking me if I wanted to be part of a phone call last night. And so we, we met and it was Dr. White, Dr. Jones, an infectious disease expert, and a couple other people, I'm trying to, for some reason, I'm blanking on some of their names. And through that conversation, it, they asked what sort of help I need. And one of the things that we were talking about, from what I said at the Select Board meeting on Wednesday, is we need data. And in that, in, on that phone call alone, there were two epidemiologists there. So we, we spoke on the phone today, this morning, calling it a group because we're trying to organize something. But it's really just, right now, I've only spoken to two of them. Two people who are willing to help with modeling, and we're trying to get some sort of group together, but it's not, nothing's off the ground immediately right now. It's just people we're talking to and they're experts that I'm consulting with, and honestly, I would trust their opinion.
No, I appreciate that, but I think that we normally have a process of how we establish things that we're going to make important decisions off of. And we should, should really be vetting who is going to be providing any data to us if it's for major decisions like this. And, and we don't normally just wait for who volunteers. Matt?
Yeah, I was planning to bring this up under Select Board comment at the end. There's no data that's been done yet. The data that they were looking at was the state data. And they were working off of the state data that's publicly available. Last week, when we had, I had some questions and asked about this, I was sort of led to believe that wasn't, you know, no fault, no, no blame on anyone, but oh no, this doesn't exist. And I was, you know, someone reached out to me and said, actually, it does exist. And here, and here's what you can do, and here's how you can read this. And, and, and when I saw that, I thought, okay, this is the kind of information I'm asking for. And so I'm, we'll talk about it in detail later. There's, you know, Remain is, is willing to pitch in into, you know, into public relations, et cetera, or into data. We've got a group in Monomoy that have reached out and are willing to help us. So whatever we need to do to figure out what the risk is and be able to go back to work safely and to be able to flatten the curve and not be, you know, if we're 30 or 45 days behind Boston, we don't want to find ourselves in a serious stay-at-home in the middle of July. You know, so that, you know, so that was, that's, that's the rationale for it. We can talk about it further.
Years, 30, 45 days coming from, whose assumption is that? What is it based on? We just, I mean, making these kind of statements are huge statements, and it, it may just be someone's opinion. So I just, I want to be clear on where things are coming from, but Jason had his hand up as well. And then Rita.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I was on that call as well. And I think, you know, the big alarming thing was if there's 150 or 200,000 arrivals here, whether, you know, that's locals and visitors and everything, that's where it gets a little alarming. So if we're talking about construction, I don't see that being hundreds of thousands of arrivals coming here. It's much less. I don't think that is going to be as detrimental as what could happen in June, July or August. Just to kind of bring it back to the construction. I, I agree, you know, how do we know that, that we're behind Boston? We could be. I, you know, I want Roberto to come and say, like, that's, you know, and I think it's, we're trying to get there. Matt, you said, you know, it's the politics or greed or fear. At least with the people who are on these calls, I don't think it's politics or greed, and I'm not really hearing that what's coming to me. I think it's fear, and it's fear of, people don't want to leave their house to get the virus, and it's a fear of not having any, any money. And so you have to go off island to get work, or you reverse commute, or, you know, all these things that, that, that really concern me. And I've said this for two or three weeks now, that I, I want some, something in place that we can control this because people are going to go to work. And so to control it and do it slowly, which we are. And so I just wanted to give my, my, my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Rita, then Kristin?
I think this is something that we can touch on a little bit later when we talk about the Economic Recovery Group. But I think to your point, Dawn, I think that we, we don't have the sort of the Public Health Task Force. We had the emergency group, we had the hospital. But again, as we move into this transition mode, I think it's possible the Economic Recovery Group could have, really, it should be a balance of public health and economic health. And right now, there's no one specifically on that group, it looks like, from Department of Health or with an epidemiological background. So I don't know if there should be two different groups that converse, but I think that the two have to be in conversation and in communication. And so I don't know if it's an expansion of the Economic Recovery Group or if it's two separate task forces. But I think it should be regularized and, you know, go through a process. And I think it's equally as important as the, the current makeup of the Economic Recovery Group that we have. I think we have to have science and epidemiology guiding us regularly and part of the process.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with that, but I'd just like to figure out how it's being established. I mean, it's a little bit odd for two board members to have a call with a staff member and not everybody else to be told about it. But, but that's all right. But no, but we were looking to Roberto as an epidemiologist working in conjunction with the hospital, and that's what we've been going off of. And the hospital in general with this conversation has said that they're ready for some activity to happen. And I'm concerned about not getting some of this activity done before more people arrive on the island. When it does feel safer for people to be out and about tying up some of these like wide-open projects. And that's why this proposal didn't have any new permits.
My only question is, yes, definitely the qualifier of, yes, I've been working with the hospital, and yes, I am an epidemiologist. And yes, I can interpret the data, and yes, I can do a lot of things, but I can't do everything, and I do need some help when I reach out to it. But if we're really looking into every single order and every single working group needs vetting, I don't even know who worked on the landscaping order. I don't know who worked on the construction order. I don't know who, none of us really know who the working groups were in all these other orders. So why, when this one that really counts, the epidemiology one, we now have to vet all the doctors that are on it?
I believe those things were only done with staff and, and board.
Even, even on Wednesday, we were told that members of the NBA worked on the construction one.
Steve?
Can I jump in here for a second to Roberto's point? This right here, Phase Two draft, is the first time that I saw it this morning. I had to find in the packet. So as part of the vetting process, the Board of Health has not been involved. Our members, I don't know, I can't speak for Rita, whether she's got emails of when all this was going on. But you want to talk about vetting process, you throw in this at us now, and you're gonna look for a date for implementation. And it's, it's a rush. It's been, it's a rush.
I don't know why that wasn't provided to you. That should, that should have come from administration. Kristin?
I've had a few comments backing up a little bit. I think I was gonna, the hospital has really been guiding the Select Board in a lot of the decisions that we've been making. And so hearing that we're 30 to 45 days away, I, I would hope that maybe Gary could join another call and see what the hospital is predicting and what their staff is gearing up for. And I kind of, I agreed with Jason that the opening up of Phase Two isn't going to have a large increase in people coming to the island. I'd be okay with maybe dropping it down to six instead of eight people per job site. But I don't know if that makes anybody feel any more comfortable. I just, I think these, some of these things were, were being more restrictive and we're protecting the community in that way. And I really would like to see us line up with the governor's orders as much as possible to make this a little bit less confusing while also, you know, making it safe for our community.
Matt?
We're all just guessing. None of us know what the impact of, of being opened, the way, the way we've been for this past week has been. We won't, and, and the virus doesn't, you know, doesn't send us a note and tell us, you know, we'll know that in a couple of weeks. And so, you know, so we're all guessing. And, and I would like to have some input from people who actually are not guessing. And that, and that's what I'm trying to do. And I, I want to be opened as much as anybody. You know, I, I want to be able to do, but I want to make sure that we're doing it safely and we're basing it on the right things. You know, so, you know, and, and, you know, and they, and I, and Jason, maybe greed is a little high, or maybe fear, or, you know, politics. But, you know, but I, maybe, you know, I'll, I'll retract the greed, you know, because I think it's desperation. But the politics, I won't retract, you know, and, and that is what's happening. We're all getting pressured from all different areas, and we all have different constituents that we have to answer to. And, and I think we should be answering them in. And I think we should be answering them with science and with risk analysis and looking at the total picture and coming back with what's, you know, work. And I'm not sure the state is looking at it. We have, the number Jason used, 150,000, it's 300 individual back and forths in July and August, 300,000 in July and August. 50% of those come from, come from current hotspots. So they're coming from New York or Boston, places that are hotspots now. It doesn't recognize, the virus doesn't recognize whether you're an islander going off to BJ's to get food, or whether you're a, you know, a construction worker, or you're a second homeowner. It just wants you, the viruses work on transmission, they need hosts. So it's either coming here or going there if, once it starts. So I just think, you know, I just...
Thank you. Can we just get back a little bit? I mean, we've invited Steve Visco to be here. I know, I didn't know you hadn't seen the draft prior to this. I'm very sorry about that. But do you have particular questions? Rita's got her hand up as well. Or comments? I mean, it's a draft. It is open for discussion.
The only comment, though, I say is I wish, you know, and maybe I will take some blame for this of not appointing one of our board members to be in those talks, which probably should have happened, not necessarily me, but somebody. And yes, we're talking about it now. And it's like Matt said, these are very important decisions. And the Board of Health's main concern is the health and safety of this community. That's the bottom line.
Rita?
I do just want to bring up that in our packet from Wednesday, we did have a draft process for consideration, development of the phased work plans, and we didn't really get a chance to discuss it. Libby, Dawn, and I had discussed it after the prior week's meeting. And I think to your point, Steve, the intention was to avoid exactly what you're talking about, where you're getting information last minute without having a chance to read through things and without complete transparency as to where some of these things have come from. The very first two parts, two steps of this process were developing a plan with relevant industry stakeholder town council input clearly indicating where, how the information is coming from. And then number two, circulation of draft plan to industry stakeholders, relevant boards like Select Board and Board of Health, Economic Impact Work Group, et cetera. So, you know, we, I think this is coming up again now as, as an issue. And I think in terms of process, both for us being able to make decisions as well as for the public to understand what is going on, I think we really need to revisit that and put a process in place, even if we think these are the last two phased work plans. I think we have to make sure that our decision-making is consistent and has a process and is transparent.
Steve?
Yeah, I would agree with everything she said. I printed that out and brought it with me. This is, that was in the packet.
Yep, I think, I think everybody wants to follow a very open process and be on the same page on this. These are the only two, or, well, I guess, well, now I think the masks, the mask order's in moot point because of what the governor did today that actually has made it more restrictive. These are the only two things that we are more restrictive than the rest of the state on right now. And, I mean, just kind of bringing it back to that is, you know, I was very much in favor of, of taking these extra measures with these particular industries with the amount of activity that was going on at the beginning, but I thought it would be a much shorter time period. And now I'm seeing us run up against the fact that there's all this open work that could probably be getting done safer now than it might be if the population increases and we might start to develop more of a surge. You know, we've been, we've been very fortunate in keeping these cases at bay. The hospital says they're ready for us. And that was the original piece, too, was that the hospital said, we need time to be ready. And they're saying that they have the ability to handle things, they have increased testing capabilities, and they're saying that Boston has the ability for transfers if needed. So I don't want to see anybody get sick, but I also am, I'm more concerned that more people could get sick later by having, not having some of these things done before there's more of an influx of people. So I think that that was some of the thought process and also the fairness perspective. We're bringing in large crews to finish town projects and hospital projects and, you know, Tuscan, I can't work with more than one person. We got a massive letter from them today. And we've got four-person crews on some of the most critical projects that we found, like the year-round housing projects and the non-water type. But we probably do need to move into some sort of a next phase for all of these other projects that are wide open. And there's some very hazardous situations with wide open pools with rebar sticking out, that I know that pools are not generally a priority for people, but there's a hazard going on. So I just think that some of these things need to be thought through, and it's absolutely to be in conjunction with the Board of Health and something that everybody is comfortable with. And I do think we should have a second step before we move back in line with the governor, because that would open up new permitting. But I feel like we could safely, with all of these things that are put in place and the way people seem to be generally following what's been put in place, open up some more stuff to get it completed. That's my thought. Greg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I appreciate you listening to all of these comments. And, you know, if I could just sort of help to guide people's thinking as you move forward in terms of process, you know, I think that there are two fundamental related questions that you have in front of you right now. The first question is, what is the appropriate Phase Two in terms of the type of work that would be allowed in the next phase and the number of workers that would be permitted to be present? But the second related question to that is, when is the appropriate time to open up that Phase Two? And so, you know, there was a lot of talk about, well, we don't have the science, and, you know, we might just be guessing. I think that probably goes more to the when than the what. And, you know, it might make sense to compartmentalize these two questions a little bit, at least for purposes of discussion, because if you have consensus on the what, then you could start looking at the science to figure out the when.
Okay, so does that go back to, I mean, Steve, I don't know how much time you've had to review it, and if you have particular thoughts right now that maybe we could talk about? Or Rita's also our Board of Health representative?
I think we need the rest of the board members to look at this and, you know, maybe we'll come up, you know, meet sometime next week and, you know, follow something similar to this process that we should be following.
Do you want to have a joint meeting, Rita?
Yeah, I would agree. I, you know, I don't feel comfortable sort of speaking on behalf of the Board of Health. I think possibly a joint meeting would be ideal. I also think that, you know, Steve made a great point about, you know, a reminder of what the purview of the Board of Health is. And I think, going back to our earlier conversation, I think Board of Health is focusing on public health, so we do kind of need that information and data, you know, at some point from the epidemiological side and more info on that and specific comments. Maybe it's Roberto, maybe it's the hospital on this. I know the hospital's that ready for business doesn't mean we necessarily have to, you know, send them business right away. But I, again, I think from the purely Board of Health point of view, that science is really important. I do have a question about, and it's a crossover between the two plans and this sort of, you know, open pools with rebar throwing out, and it would be for Jeff Carlson, but I can, I can wait on that if you wanted to continue with Board of Health questions.
Go ahead and ask your question.
My question is, in the landscape, Back to Work Plan Number Five, under Application Procedure, it says for permission to conduct other site work services that are necessary to maintaining the safety sanitation essential operation of residents, et cetera, et cetera, you can apply. So it sounds like sort of, and they're going to go and they're going to look at the site, inspect, and provide a written response. I'm wondering if Jeff can just talk, speak to whether or not that covers a pool situation and what that is meant to cover, because I'm wondering if, if the pools and some of those safety hazards are actually addressed in the landscaping side of things as opposed to in the construction side of things.
Sure, so I'll try to answer that as best I can. I think the, the language that was used there kind of mirrors the governor's order for the, my apologies, for looking down for the safety sanitation and essential operation as it relates to landscaping. So as we've been around this week and some of the questions that we've gotten relate to people getting, you know, whether it's a granite stair for egress into the house installed or landscaping of that nature, to address kind of some of those in-process things that were happening. I mean, as an example, we had someone called specifically about the fact that they had a propane tank that they had installed that was sitting up on some wooden cribbing instead of sitting how it was supposed to be because it was installed and stopped in process. And to address that, I think when you look at pools and pool constructions, and I would definitely default to Paul a little bit on this, but in my experience with that, safety for that and rebar are things where I'm pretty sure that rebar is supposed to be capped and covered as it's exposed for safety purposes. I know in my previous work doing land surveying, that was something when we were looking at footings and foundations and pools. I believe that it may be an OSHA requirement that that's capped, but I would definitely default to Paul for what the requirements for exposed rebar are for construction.
Paul, did you want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, for pool construction, you know, that's generally a quick excavation. These guys go in very quickly and set up the rebar, and it's meant to be shot right after. So, you know, it's a little different, you know, on public work where you see rebar associated with building roads and bridges where there's, you know, ends of this rebar that expose, that are exposed and hazardous. Most of this stuff in a pool situation is turned back and curled, and so we don't, we don't see hazards like that. But left open, the trenches start to, the excavation starts to get compromised, water destroys the shape of the pool, and these guys end up having to start over again. So it's a safety hazard to have an open pool, to have an open hole like that, certainly. And, you know, these guys do their best to protect that stuff, but it's meant to be dealt with right away and not to be kept and allowed to sit around.
Thank you. I think, Libby, did you want to see if there's any public questions?
I think there's an issue going on with it, because I, there were a number of them, and then I refreshed to make sure I had them all, and they went away. So I asked N C T V what is going on.
I think they just said it was back on, but maybe, I'm not sure.
Okay, yep, it is back on. Jump, oh.
Jason, and then I'll come back to you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to sound like a broken record here, everyone, so I apologize. I think we've done a really good job. We restricted and we, you know, the Board of Health made really tough decisions quickly with the supplemental order, and we stopped construction, and we stopped landscaping. And then we came up with the next phase, we're going to go really slow, once we heard things from the hospital. So I think there's another step that can be slow, whether, maybe we go to four people on every job site and we keep the controls in place, only if we keep educating people. And the more education that's coming out with masks from the governor, all these things make me feel a little better. So I'm fine going with four people. I've talked to people I trust in the construction industry that says, Jason, look, like 89% of the work can be done with four people, it'll take a little longer, we might have to work Sundays or something, but we can do it, and we can do it safely, but we can't do it with one person with some of these jobs. So I'm comfortable with four and whatever else that, you know, Board Health would put on there, or however you read the state order. But I also wanted to say that, that, you know, Rita and Steve, you're saying that it's public health, it's public health. Well, public health is all the other things that you referred to earlier, Rita, about the collateral damage. This is where the broken record comes into play of addiction and depression and mental health and suicide, and all those things continue to go up. I just want to make sure we're, if you're talking about public health, you're also considering that as well and not just the virus. I know we don't have a lot of data on either side, and I know it's difficult. I just, I got to, every, every time we meet, I have to keep bringing that up.
Rita?
That was something I was going to mention later on as well, is that I think particularly with the collateral damage, we are speaking very anecdotally. And I think if there's a way to get information, whether it's from Fair Winds or from the schools or some sort, any of the organizations that work in the social services or human resources area, I think that's part of the data we should be getting, because I think that is going to inform broader policy as well as our ability to perhaps reallocate funds. So it's definitely not forgotten. And I think we do need to find a way to regularize it and have that information provided to us the same way the boats are providing us information, broaden, broaden the data collection and then make sure that we have the ability to process it and then use it for our decision making.
Teske, or Teske Elberti, the director of Fair Winds, did send something a couple of weeks in, seeing a significant uptick in issues, and I'm sure she would be willing to provide something updated. I mean, we're like seven weeks into this shutdown, and it's, things are getting a lot more dire. Leslie?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to say at Plus, you know, we support moving forward with Phase Two as it was originally drafted, allowing all permits in accordance with the governor's order to move forward as long as they were issued prior to March 2nd and as long as work commenced. I mean, these are jobs that were already started, people have started them in good faith, they were issued a permit by the town. As you mentioned, we are about to start Week Eight of this. It's a severe economic impact to a lot of people in our community. Construction, as I believe Rita pointed out, is one of our largest year-round employment sectors. And as important as public health is, you know, as Jason mentioned, there's other things that, you know, are important to take into consideration. Phase Two, you know, seems like a reasonable step forward. It does not open up any new permits or any new construction starts. It simply allows people to get back to work and to get back to what they were doing. The normal construction flow on the Antucket, which I think most people know tends to be a nine-month cycle, is completely upended. So projects that should have been finished and ready for the summer aren't going to be, which will cause a different set of issues for people. You know, we've had great success with our inspections and enforcement. Our inspectors have been going out, doing the random inspections. They've taken a very educational approach when they've gone to a job site that may not be entirely compliant, and people have been very receptive to doing what they need to do. They want to stay safe, they want to keep working, and at Plus, we want them to keep working. I think my last point is that, you know, the hospital seemed to encourage some loosening of the restrictions. This, again, seems like a gradual reduction. And, you know, it's more restrictive than the state. We're proposing less people be allowed on a job site, it's less than 10, and again, it's no new permits. And we, you know, really encourage, you know, careful consideration with this so people can get back to work.
I don't know, I know Gary Shaw is on now. I didn't know if he wanted to add anything from the hospital's perspective.
Thanks, Dawn. I haven't actually been able to get on in just a minute, don't know what's transpired. Can you just give me a summary so I know what you're asking me to respond to?
I think we're just continuing the discussion from the other night in regard to a second phase of allowing some of the construction and landscaping activities to get, proceed to get finished up this spring. And you were generally receptive to it before, but I just wonder if you have any new thoughts. I know that there's been, about gathering more data and so forth.
Let me just make sure you can hear me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, I'm in my car, so, uh, don't be surprised. Wearing the seatbelt, so I'm safe. I, uh, I know there's, um, there's not a roadmap, uh, for what you're working towards accomplishing and, and that's extremely frustrating, uh, for everyone, uh, because we haven't gone down this path before and, uh, and we're always in ourselves, you know, what does safety look like? What does common sense look like? Uh, there's, um, there's some guidance coming out now. There's a Johns Hopkins report that's out, uh, and it's, uh, it's a document that describes, you know, how to re-enter, uh, out after COVID and I believe, uh, Roberto has a copy of that. I think it would be helpful, I'm not sure if the, uh, the board has it, but I would suggest, uh, getting a copy, looking at it. It's got, uh, recommendations in it, uh, for things to consider related to, you know, prevalence of disease and how fast to move. Um, it, it's pretty comprehensive, probably one of the better studies out there right now. But I, I, I just applaud that the fact that you're moving forward, uh, looking to, um, make common sense decisions, uh, understanding it's a balance of, it's a balance of safety and a, and it's a balance of economics. And, uh, and I would encourage you to be ready to, uh, enact your plans, uh, once the governor's given his indication on, on what is, uh, his focus is moving forward. Um, so this is a time to lean into it as you're doing, do some plan. Um, I, um, I think that, uh, well, I haven't heard what you've said tonight, but it sounds as though you're, you're talking about size of crews and those things. Uh, I guess the, the one point here is that, uh, you know, the hospital is ready to, uh, observe and, and, uh, backstop you and the town with, uh, any cases of COVID. So, um, uh, so, you know, move forward and, and look at, uh, what you can do progressively, uh, to be ready to do some things that, uh, allow you to have more of an economic, uh, build, uh, as a town starts to get orders from the governor towards the middle of, uh, May.
Thank you. There was, there was also some comments made tonight, some, uh, some projections that come in, are coming from some other people with, um, epidemiology backgrounds that they're worried that we're behind the curve of Boston, that, that we might be in line for a spike in 30 to 45 days. Did, did you have any thoughts on that?
Well, communities that haven't had a spike, uh, are, you know, at risk if they don't have, uh, COVID that's been there. Um, you know, we don't know that the disease, uh, once you've had it, gives you immunity, uh, but we do know that, uh, there are a number of, uh, percentages of asymptomatic carriers that, uh, have had the disease, um, and, uh, are shedding it but aren't, uh, sick. We also, uh, have started getting information about children and communities that have large numbers of children, uh, they apparently can contract the disease and, um, not show an illness and not shed it. Uh, I don't have enough information to talk about it tonight. I think that's something that Roberto could, uh, get some facts on from the, from the state of Massachusetts. And so you look at your community as a blend to see what your risk is. Um, my thought is that if we were going to have a spike and, um, but it would probably be within the next month or two, uh, just depending on how well, uh, you know, we use personal protective gear, use social distancing, wash our hands. Uh, so I, I wouldn't say we're, we're behind it. I mean, we're kind of ahead of it. We just haven't had a spike yet. Uh, and, and that's, uh, that's always a possibility. And that's one reason that we want to do the serology study. Uh, the reason I'm, I wasn't on this call earlier is I, I was, uh, finishing up, uh, an online module of about 16, um, modules to, to be able to, um, submit a study, uh, got that accomplished. Uh, but we want to do this study so that we can see what the prevalence is of, uh, of COVID on the island in a small representative sample. Uh, that would be very helpful to help us understand developing roadmap. Do, do we have a little bit? Have we had more than we think? Uh, there are lots of studies that are going on now that show that there have been more COVID present than originally thought. And if you know that, then I think that you can, um, actively and do some things, um, probably more aggressively in some communities that have had more of it. So we're still trying to create that roadmap. We're still trying to, trying to create that path going forward. Uh, but I think you're planning to get there and you're planning to be able to do some things that allow the economy come back, to come back into play. That's extremely important. Uh, and if we do see COVID, uh, then we'll, at that point as a community, talk about, you know, are we, um, getting a spike and do we need to put some controls into that? Uh, that's a discussion we have to have when we see that. Uh, but I wouldn't hold back because, um, we haven't seen it. Uh, I think we're well-prepared at the hospital and I think you're well-prepared in the community to make decisions if we do need to pull back. So I just encourage your planning. Uh, what I've been hearing is, is I believe, uh, the right direction to be going.
Thank you. Um, Libby, I'm sorry to get back to you on, were there a few public comments that were relevant that you might want to try and address?
Sure. Um, I'll, I'll just try to get through as many as I can, just kind of quick because some of them might've already been answered and some might just be sort of rhetorical. Uh, Mary Longacre, why eight people? Hardly any different than 10 people allowed under the state order. So why perpetuate the difference between local and state orders? Uh, Amy Eldridge, when will we be back to following the governor's orders? There's a comment, a couple of comments about unemployment. There's a, uh, kind of a question about revisiting island workers in a 14-day quarantine. Uh, there's a bit about doctors and credentials and experts from the hospital. Any thought about keeping the same foreworker limit but adding back construction on homes of seasonal residents who received permits and whose work began prior to the pandemic rules? What capacity of cases is the hospital capable of handling? No, I wasn't reading the name. Sorry. I'll go back to that. Deanna Atherton, have assessments of orders five and six been completed? It has not yet been two weeks since these orders were implemented. Have the numbers been generated and analyzed? Rick Atherton, what specifically has changed in the hospital's ability to deal with a higher level of COVID cases? Is the answer that we can send infected patients to Boston? Thomas Beretta, when will antibody testing be available? Julie Kingston, are wastewater testing results back? That's it.
Uh, what about the wastewater? David Gray was working on something.
Yeah, I don't think he's got the results back yet. Unless Roberto, you know.
No, I just sent them a message to see if I can find that. I don't think they're back yet.
I don't know if Gary wanted to address some of those hospital questions, if you didn't talk them all.
Well, I think I heard a couple of them. Uh, I, the serology testing is something that I hear a lot. I, I probably get asked that four or five times a day. And of course, I'm asking, uh, the Mass General Brigham about that as well. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's not developing as fast as I know the community would like, uh, or the country would like. Uh, and it's because, uh, there's variability in the test results and what they mean. Uh, I just want to point out that, uh, you know, just because someone can be tested doesn't mean they actually know what they have. Uh, each test is different related to its sensitivity and what it's indicating. So, you know, clinically, if a doctor order it, is ordering it, then they're, they're ordering it because they're looking for a certain number of days of viral load. At least, uh, that's what then makes the test react. Um, so there's, there's many variables and what we're trying to do is get some, um, FAQs developed that the Mass General Brigham can help us with to give the community an understanding of what is testing and what isn't it. Uh, it's, it's not the end-all, cure-all and it, it doesn't get rid of the disease. If it's a test that is reliable and available, uh, then you're either testing for, uh, active disease or you're testing to see if you've had the disease and are over it. Um, they're not available typically in commercial quantities. Uh, so I, I don't really have anything specific other than to say that, uh, if you do come to the Cottage Hospital, we can do serology testing for those that have clinical symptoms. There's enough for that. Uh, and we can, um, uh, do PCR testing and we've expanded the criteria for that at our drive-through, uh, and actually have gotten, uh, quite a few people coming through now, which is good. Uh, and that's for folks that have any kind of ache or pain and they don't have to think they have COVID. They can come to our drive-through and, and, uh, have a PCR test done. We have the supplies for that now. So, so, um, we've got more of that available. I think I heard a question of what has changed at the hospital that a lot, uh, makes us think that we can handle more cases. Uh, well, we've basically, uh, been able to carve the hospital up into areas where we can handle those that we have suspicion of COVID for, which we didn't have before. Uh, and, uh, we've also been able to have low transmission rates on the island, uh, which didn't overwhelm us. So we kept our prep going and the coast, which was able to then ramp up and, and grow their ICU capability, even though they've had more COVID than we have, uh, their caseload's starting to come down to some degree on the inpatient side, on the ventilator ICU side. So we have a much greater capability to, uh, transfer people that would, would need that if they're in respiratory distress and our, our, uh, our CMO's position is that if, uh, she during, if the doctors determine that that's necessary, uh, then we'll put you on a helicopter and get you to where there's a higher level of care pretty quickly. Um, so we've been able to kind of bounce under the water here like a pebble on the bottom of the river, just kind of moving along, trying to keep under what's going on, on the code. Uh, and we're well-positioned, you know, with testing now, with training for doing, uh, contact screening. Um, we've, uh, got surge plans that are well-defined that talk about if we have more than 14, uh, that we have to admit, how we would surge for that, how we would work with, uh, uh, the mainland, the Coast Guard, uh, med flights. So, um, we're feeling that we're, we're ready, uh, if we were to have that kind of a, uh, caseload. Uh, of course, we don't want to have that kind of caseload, uh, but that also doesn't mean, um, uh, you know, be so restrictive that, you know, um, that people can go out and have some commerce. We, we expect that we will always have some cases until there's a vaccine or medicines and that's going to take some time. Until then, um, working together as an Antucketers, um, social distancing, separating ourselves, washing our hands, uh, those are the things, you know, wearing masks in public, uh, those are the things, those are the tools that help us and you, uh, keep COVID at bay. Transmit it in large numbers if we can do those things, uh, and think about it, uh, all the time. Were there other questions you wanted me to answer, Don?
Thank you. Got it. Uh, Matt was raising his hand. I don't know if he has a question for you or?
Yeah, I do. I do for Gary. Uh, you just mentioned larger than 14. What are the parameters? Can you share the parameters that you would, uh, say were a month out? What would the parameters be where you'd come to us and say, geez, you guys need to tighten up again? Have you guys got those?
You know, um, so Matt, that's a great question. Um, it's, it's, it's what I've been saying. Uh, the roadmap to this is looking at, uh, transmission on the island. Uh, when we do contact tracing, when we have cases, uh, we're looking at where we think the case is originated from. So transmission between people on the island i- is, uh, obviously not a good thing. Uh, that's, that's one main focus. Uh, and so what we do when we find that, we quickly quarantine and then we do contact tracing to get others that might've been in touch with that individual into quarantine and we've been very successful doing that. If we start to see, uh, transmission on the island take off to a point where it's difficult to contact trace and that would have to consume more than our 30 people that are trained, uh, then we'd most likely be talking to the town very quickly to say, we need a more robust contact tracing, uh, uh, adjunct and there is that available through the Mass Brigham, uh, Mass General Brigham. Uh, so let's just say we had a case and then we had five cases and we had nine. When we start seeing a steady climb like that, uh, that's when we'd be starting to say it's, you know, there's transmission occurring and we want to slow it down. That takes, uh, several weeks to get going and, and it gives us an opportunity when we see, as we did when we first saw COVID, to get right on top of it very quickly in a community this size. Uh, we're not, we're not as dense as New York City or Boston and we know that we'll have fewer people this summer just because of the situation that we're in now, uh, moving forward a little bit slowly.
Uh, Jason, then Christie?
Just a quick question for you, Gary. When you said, uh, I wouldn't hold back because we haven't seen it, you weren't meaning to open the floodgates. Uh, we, I think you were referring to, uh, a- another phased, um, you know, measured step in, you know, construction and landscaping. Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I, you know, we know the governor's orders are backstopping what you're doing and we don't know what he's going to recommend. And we know that he's put together a planning commission on how to, you know, get business going. What I'm suggesting is when I say don't hold back, don't, don't try to look, uh, to be paralyzed with analysis because there's not a lot of data out there related to, you know, uh, how all of these parts and pieces move. What I'm suggesting is do what you're doing, lean into planning and be ready with your, be, when you get directives that allow you to be less restrictive, be, be prepared for that. So be moving forward is, is my suggestion. Thank you.
Christie?
Um, I just have a couple of comments. I think all of us are, like Gary just said, a little paralyzed with how to make these decisions. I think, you know, dealing with this, all of us on select board would have helped everybody. These are going to be some of the toughest decisions that we've had to make of any other board. There's no roadmap. There's no, no one telling us, you know, what the virus is going to do or how we can protect our community. We, we keep asking for data. We've made a ton of deci- decisions so far without data and even when we do have data, it's going to be tough to pin things back. So we just had a couple of positive cases and, you know, is it because we opened phase one or is it because people got together for Easter or is it because somebody went off island and brought it back? It's, it's really tough to keep saying how, how we're going to get it. I think it's going to come here in some way or not and it's fear that's kind of le- leading us to not make some of these decisions. And I think we need to take the leadership to at least start talking about what is phase two. If May 18th, the governor lifts the ban, then construction's going to open up. So how can we start moving this conversation forward? I, you know, I know Matt is concerned about listening to constituents and I think that's what we were elected to do. I'm hearing from people that they're going to go off island and I think that's more harmful to our community than letting people go to work who are here. So I think it's important to listen to the constituents which are saying keep us safe and let us go back to work. So how can we do both of those? I just also wanted to point out, we just tried to relax the restriction for retail. So why are we punishing construction and, you know, helping retail? I think we need to be thinking island-wide about how we're protecting all of our businesses. So I just want to encourage us to try to focus back on the what and not necessarily the when. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Uh, Rita?
Yeah, I have, um, a couple of questions. I think it's for, um, probably Paul and Leslie, but first just to respond to you, I, um, Christie, I do feel that, um, not knowing, um, who the cases are, not specifically names, but knowing, you know, anything about the cases, I think from a policy point of view, I feel like we're kind of shooting in the dark. We don't know if it's our messaging, if it's our education, if it's language, if it's, um, you know, the specific industries. So I think that's a disadvantage to us in our ability to react from a policy point of view, whether it's loosening up or restricting it. Um, but, you know, I don't know if we're going to be able to ever have that information. Um, my questions are, um, we've been getting some, um, questions about unpermitted work, like painters, and I just wanted to clarify that if you're a painter, one painter can go to a job and do interior work, but what we're talking about tonight doesn't, because it's unpermitted work, doesn't apply to say four painters going to, or eight painters going to a job site. Um, and then my other question was about enforcement. If we're talking about, um, doubling the number of people on a job site and opening it up a bit, um, we were, we were told today that the, uh, the police department isn't going to be taking part in enforcement anymore. So I'm just wondering why and then if we have the capacity, if, if plus has the capacity to enforce, if we're opening it up further.
Paul?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I can speak to the painting aspect of it. Painting's not a licensed trade, but I could easily tie it to, um, weatherproofing. I mean, it protects your exterior finishes. It's, it's very important. And when it's, when it's done, so, so in a standalone scenario, um, if we want to move in that direction and, and, um, accommodate these painters, um, I think that's smart. Uh, it protects your exterior finishes. It certainly is part of weatherproofing and I have, uh, I have no objection to, uh, um, adding painters, uh, to the four-person scenario. It's already being, it's already contemplated anyways in wrapping up an exterior. So if, so if you're, if you're pursuing weather tightness to, uh, to finish the job, you, you know, the icing on the cake would be the paint, the caulking and, uh, you know, anything that's required to protect that exterior wood or, well, all that exterior trim. So I don't have any problem with that. Um, it can also be done in a single worker scenario. Um, and when contemplated in conjunction with a building permit, you know, if I issue a building permit for a new home, painting travels with it. So, um, it, it, you know, it would be understandable that that trade would, would follow with, uh, the rest of the trades that are, um, hired to complete the house.
Ian, then Leslie?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I mean, that's very true in the sense of, host of habitability, which is what they're able to do under their contractor. But I think what, you know, they're looking at is- they're looking at is unpermitted work, which they don't need a permit, where eight or ten people show up at a house just sanding the outside trim and painting and all that. That's that's nonessential under the order right now. You know, before May eighteenth, I would consider that, but under the one or one person job, they could do work and maybe we should look at. I didn't see it in this this draft here, maybe in which we probably should have changed to one or or two-person jobs to just for the sheer safety aspect. Maybe that's something we could bring up this week also in in reviewing this draft.
Leslie had her hand up and then Matt.
I just wanted to touch on the enforcement. We have plenty of inspectors at Plus to go around and inspect the job sites, to do random inspections. We're already doing that. And we're prepared to continue doing that with phase two as needed.
Matt.
The chief chief has there's a difference of opinion. So we're talking about what is appropriate. I want to make sure that our public officials are all in agreement on what is appropriate. You know, we can get to that. And I agree with Steve about the two people, you know, two people issues. I think that's important for safety. You know, and if we want, if they want, if the Board of Health is going to, you know, fine tune it so it's, you know, sort of the dangerous jobs and let one person do the others, that's fine. But, you know, I think that's important.
I guess, Steve, what do you, how do you want to do the next step? So that so that we can all work together on this and have everybody comfortable.
I would say I'm definitely not in favor of doing any type of emergency weekend.
No, no, I I think that we want to do an appropriately posted meeting for next week.
No, I I'm, this is just me. And I'm not sure about the rest of the board, our board. I would, I was thinking more on the lines of maybe after your meeting Wednesday, in case you want to take some more public comment yourself, we could, we could maybe have a joint meeting, whether it be Thursday and maybe, you know, if we had to possibly, you know, as the board, Friday and with, you know, maybe you attending to and Greg to, you know, go over the final aspects of it with maybe, you know, whether it's implemented retroactive that day or we set a date of the eleventh, which would be Monday. It's, I I need some more input from the rest of the board and, you know, and Roberto also.
Is your full board in receipt on a draft now?
No, no.
That gets to them immediately.
Not unless they're not, not unless they've seen your packet.
Yeah, no, I thought that that would have gone out to everybody or that it did. But um, but maybe we could have a joint meeting at our meeting on Wednesday and do and do a meeting with the Board of Health at five o'clock. Would that make some sense rather than having to have a Thursday meeting and a Friday meeting? We've already got meetings posted on Wednesday and Friday. It would just be you adding onto it, I suppose.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that. Does Roberto? Well, but we need to, you know, make the other board members aware. I'm sure they're watching this.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if they could, Roberto, go ahead.
My my question is for actually Greg. If we forward this draft to the board, can they provide comments directly for individually, but not as a group for what's written so that we can have it in the packet for Wednesday?
Hi, sorry about that. Um, yes, I mean, as long as the the board members don't deliberate amongst each other, I think that's fine. So if you want to solicit comments or suggestions from them and then have them send them to you and then you put all of those comments in the packet and then we go through them at the meeting, then that's fine. The only thing they can't do is, you know, sort of discuss them or you can't, you know, whittle them down and then redistribute them. But if it's just a matter of providing them to you to be in the packet, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we can definitely at least have our meeting on Wednesday. If it needs to be a joint meeting, I'll I'll leave that up to my chair and vice chair. But we can get the information out and have them provide comments as soon as we can so that they can digest this. Last time I felt a little rushed.
So you do, you know, joint meeting or separate meeting ourselves on Wednesday?
I I personally would, I would personally want to see just us. We have time to have our discussion, have that discussion in public, deliberate amongst ourselves and then bring it back for discussion. We will need to make another final meeting, possibly right after the select board meeting on Wednesday, mainly because we're the ones who have to vote it in.
Yeah. I mean, our our meeting, you know, probably wouldn't, you know, by ourselves, wouldn't take that long. So I don't, I don't, I guess the select boards meeting is usually always at five. And whether we, you know, we could do something before that, as long as it's the time is available.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so are we, so you guys would have a meeting earlier on Wednesday and then we we'd get together to talk about it? And then you'd have a subsequent meeting? Is that what we're thinking? I just want, I just want to be clear on on process so everybody knows what's happening.
Yeah, I believe that. I think that would be a good way to go forward.
Okay, Kristy.
I was just wondering if you want more comments on the select board tonight before you guys meet. And my second comment is just if you guys are going to be meeting earlier in the day Wednesday, I'm not sure if every select board member would be able to watch or get feedback from that. So I'd maybe suggest Tuesday just so that we have time to comment on your your meeting if we're not going to do a joint meeting.
These three are Wednesday works for me, but Greg has a.
I I just want to raise a a technical point, and that is if the Board of Health is going to meet on Tuesday, it would have to be after seven o'clock at this point because you need to post forty-eight hours in advance. And the longer this meeting goes on, the later that meeting on Tuesday would have to be.
And the posting ability is not there right now. I mean, staff is gone.
So you're probably more realistically looking at something on on Wednesday anyway.
Plus, school committee has Tuesday, so that's not going to work.
What's available in terms of clients on Wednesday, Erica?
It's open up until we meet at five.
Okay.
So maybe Board of Health can meet at three. Dictate your schedule.
Yeah, I mean, three's three's a good guy.
Okay. I mean, so do we do we have any more discussion in regard to the construction inform the Board of Health's discussion? And or then on to the landscaping piece, Jason?
I just want to be clear. Are we sending exactly what's in our packet to the Health Department to just as is and then see, you know, how they discuss it and what they what their view is, what their questions are? Is that where we're leaving this now?
Well, I think we still need to see your comments.
And could I just ask a a process question? Did the Board of Health see the previous version of this that I think you discussed on Wednesday?
I thought that they did, but I am hearing tonight that it was never provided, and I'm I'm not sure how that happened, but.
I I can tell you how it happened. The there's a process that you all were discussing last week that hasn't been formalized, that I was requested to prepare. I'm still completely unclear sitting here now. Is the is this the process we're following? Or not? I I don't, I don't really know. So I was, if if this is on me, I then it's on me. But I thought we were going to formalize this process and then get all the documents to the Board of Health.
Well, so at this point, if the Board of Health hasn't seen the the version that you guys started with on Wednesday, I think they're going to have to start there. Because this is a, we we did a a first step of the phase two, then you guys met on Wednesday and had some questions. Then we did sort of the second step of the phase two, which is what's in your packet now. So my recommendation would be that that Board of Health start with that Wednesday document and consider both of those together.
Okay. Yeah, I I thought we were discussing the draft. I didn't, I I I thought the process was that they would have seen it. And then we would send it more formally, but that we, I guess we did not make that clear on how to do it. So I think that maybe they should hear the board's comments if they're not all watching this meeting. That I know there's been some discussion about two workers and four workers and and some different provisions. But but I am, I am a little bit concerned as what was stated that the governor, you know, is going to start lifting things on eight, on the eighteenth potentially after the eighteenth. And I was hoping that we were going to get in line in in a second phase prior to that. But I just want to make sure that we're really clear on on how to proceed here and who needs what information to make sure it's all clear. Rita.
I don't know if we can do it. I don't know if everyone's read it, but I don't know if we can consider that draft process and use that. Again, I think otherwise admin isn't quite sure where we're at, what we're supposed to be doing. I think, you know, Dylan, you might have an idea of, you know, what you had certain expectations about the process. So I don't know if that's one place to start as regards figuring out who does what and when. I mean, I've read it and I would be prepared to make a motion, but I don't know if everyone else has had a chance to look at it.
I mean, I thought it generally sounded well, sounded like a good well-thought-out process, but I guess the thing that is missing is that I thought everyone would see the working drafts along the way so that nothing was a surprise. And that if anyone wanted to give additional input, that 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 would have been afforded since it's ultimately the the Board of Health that's going to be taking a vote on these emergency orders. You know, I don't know if they're if they wanted wanted more input to the working drafts.
Or a rough, like, they're going to get a little input now. You know, a little too late, but for last week or by now they'll have some time to look at it and submit some comments to Roberto. And I'd really like the rest of the board to, you know, go through it and then putting those to what you had in the first rough draft before this one that we you have in the packet now.
Yeah, so I think we should probably go back to starting with that first draft, but but I think that the the other comments are important that are included in that second draft and what the board has said tonight. If people are making note of those, you know, there's been some discussion on not eight, but four. There's been some discussion on expanding the one person to two people. And but but remember, I mean, this still doesn't allow any new permits, which is also going to create a significant bottleneck later on as well. So this is an additional step. Jason?
Just so everybody's clear, and we talked a lot about this, I feel really comfortable with four going going forward for all existing permits and no new permits. I think it's it's ready for safety. Like I said before, people that I respect in the community have said most of the work can get done. It'll be a little slower. And it's not allowing, it's 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 the next step. If we can't do that for another ten days, you know, with all the different meetings, then doesn't make sense to just wait for the next state order to come out. I mean, we're backing up against that, you know, pretty quick, but I'm I'm comfortable with four. I think it's a nice, measured step. I've been listening to every word that Gary Shaw has been saying you know, from the hospital. But I also want to emphasize that we have to keep educating and and communicating and educating through enforcing right with the inspectors. People are are complying and they will comply more.
Kristy.
I think restricting to four would restrict people from getting some of the projects done. So if that's what we're going to move forward with, I I would hope there could be some sort of way to get a waiver, like roofing and things like that are definitely going to need more than four people.
And Steve?
Why you brought that up, Kristy, I was just thinking off the out of the box here, and I heard this from one person. And maybe Leslie probably knows more than more about this too. Some of the bigger projects that are the weather tight ones and depending on where they are and certain associations have cut off timeframes for new work in certain areas of the island. And that's something that I'm sure there's a few of those out there and they may, you know, maybe have to ask for a waiver to increase to more people to get those jobs to weather tight. I mean, some of them are pretty big projects and I know there's certain subdivisions out there that have strict no work policies starting certain times in the summer.
Paul.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just want to make the point too, there there are certain cases where we need more than four. Especially with modular construction, these set crews have a specific amount of people in mind when they set a house, you know, the crane operator, the set crew. And, you know, so there are times when when, you know, when we need more than four. If they don't have the set crew they need, they can't safely set the house. And we do a lot of modular construction here, and I'm already hearing that, you know, they they're, you know, that they're going to need more than four people on occasion. You know, generally, you know, I would agree with Jason that four people can do a lot. But there are cases where we absolutely have to have more than four for for safety reasons. And so I want to make that point that that's another reason why we really need to look at an increase in more than four workers.
Kristy.
I would just kind of kind of take back my last comment. I think maybe we do leave it at eight, and if most people are only doing four, then that's four. But having the waiver might be adding more work to the Plus Department than than is needed.
Matt.
Yeah, I I think if 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 they're setting a house and there's a group that's coming here to set it and leave and there six of them, that's fine. I think, you know, when you when you start to get the larger numbers, you're you're, it's not just you know, the building crew, it's a bunch of other crews that are coming through and do it. And I think the way we've written it is they're in and they're out and the next guys can come in again. And so we really, I I just think this, you know, and so so I, but I think there's a way to address what Paul was saying. You know, I mean, my take is I'd like the the Board of Health to deal with it. They don't have the same pressures we do. They they have to deal with the health. And so, you know, I hope, you know, and I don't even hope, I know they'll follow some of the science. I know that the you know, and we have other pressures. We have different constituents. We have different people in our area and different things. There are builders who have contacted me, you know, so they're not, they're not all in favor of this either. I've had two or three people say, you know, this is that have concerns. So I think that we should, you know, listen to everybody, follow the science and do and make sure we understand our risk in this. You know, the last thing we want to do, I from an economic standpoint, the last thing we want to do is to be going into a stay-in-place in the middle of Is to be going into a stay in place in the middle of July. I mean, that, 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 or the other thing we don't wanna do from an economic standpoint is to, is to have. You know, a surge and a large surge and be uh, COVID island, be virus island. That could set us back. Right now, people think of us as a really safe, good place to have a house. Good place to bring their family for the summer. We've done a great job. Let's just make sure that we're following. You know, that we know what we're doing and we aren't just being uh, in a. Being politicians, you know, we.
Garry?
If I could just add a couple of comments, and this wouldn't be from the health perspective, this would just be from a, a guy that likes to build stuff himself. Um, I, I always ask myself a couple of things when, you know, we start planning. And, and I see that that's obviously what you're engaged in right now and it's challenging because. You're talking about a lot of parts and piece moving, pieces moving at the same time. But if I could make a suggestion to be able to um, understand the scope of what you're trying to achieve. Um, I would recommend setting a definition out there of, of what it is you're trying to achieve and by when. And uh, catalog the different elements of your businesses. That have different size needs for staff, different size needs for volumes. And um, and catalog that by industry, uh, spreadsheet it out. And then uh, move forward with the Board of Health Department to help you understand risk. Uh, then that's relatively easy for the hospital to help you as well, related to um. What you would wanna achieve related to size of use of restaurants or areas where um, you know, uh. Things can occur with social distancing or how many builders can come over with how many crews. Uh, but right now what I'm seeing is that um, it's difficult to understand. Uh, what you're wanting to achieve because you're addressing parts and pieces as individuals bring them up. But it would be nice to see things if you could um, find a resource to catalog them out. And then start assigning risk to them so that you can then decide, do you wanna be um, more restrictive than where the governor's at? Now through the eighteenth or uh, come up to where the governor's at. Uh, when the governor starts to uh, tell us where he's pivoting. Uh, what would the town feel comfortable doing from that point forward? Um, and it's an, it's an E then to uh, to have a focus and have some voices out there. Help proactively move through this. It's easy then to look at it from a health perspective and say, alright, now, now I get a bigger picture of the scope. Uh, maybe you've already done that. I, I haven't seen a, a, a document that kind of lays it out like that. Uh, but I think it's worth the effort. It's just a suggestion to help uh, kinda move and understand uh, you know, the whole, the whole ball. That you're dealing with right now. This is definitely hard. There's no roadmap for it. Um, and, and reentry is much harder than shutting things down. Reentry is definitely tough.
Rita?
Um, I just wanted to comment that um, I um, I, I like what Gary laid out as a way for us to start to look at. These problems and, and he men- you mentioned it last week, Gary, as well, that something along the lines of a strategic plan. And I know. The one that we've just done as a board um, has been invaluable to us as a board. And um, our ability to understand where the people are coming from and then um, prioritize and then address issues and, and we've done a great job with our strategic plan to date. I know it's a massive effort and we're talking about days, not years here, but I think. Um, again, I don't know who can do it. I think what Gary just laid out was um, you know, sort of a, a. One way to look at it, but I think we desperately need something like that. And one of the things that has really. Um, been difficult for me and I think a source of confusion is that I feel that different departments and different people are defining. Safety sanitation and essential operations differently. And I think um, what Gary was just describing, it would at least try and get us on the same page with that. And then um, again, sort of that cataloging, it's a little bit um, what the Johns Hopkins document that. Gary had mentioned, I think did as well, where then it sort of categorized different things as low risk, medium risk, high risk, but. I do think we are all operating sort of, we're like wheels turning at different speeds and we have to find a way to, to get on the same page.
Um, yeah, I just. The rea- the reason again, like for the public that we're talking about these two particular industries is these are the only two that we have put in. Restrictions that were more impactful than what statewide has done. And I just wanna go back to one of the reasons that we did that was the um, the back and forth of. A nu- numerous crews of workers in these two particular industries and we did it. Very specifically when the hospital asked for us to flatten the curve here. That has been accomplished. And we are trying so hard to rewrite this policy for these two particular industries and it's very complicated. We can't think of every single piece. Um, and I'm just. As this goes further on in time, if we're pushing it way into the end of next week or beginning, or the eleventh or the thirteenth or something. And the governor's orders are set to expire on the eighteenth. I, I just, I just start to wonder what we're doing. Um, and whether we should just go back to being in line with the governor in all industries unless there becomes a reason for us to be different. Like we have a spike in cases and a spike in cases that's attributed to one of these industries. There's been no evidence so far. That any of the, the cases on island have been attributed to construction or landscaping. And most places that we're hearing of what they're attributed to, they've been attributed to parties, to conferences. To tight restaurants, um, to public transportation and. To unfor- very sadly spread within elderly facilities. So I just wanna try and bring it back to where we started. And where we're going. Um, because I, I do feel like we're being unfair right now. To two specific industries on this island by singling them out and being more restrictive. I wanna know what the reasons are. Truly to keep this in place, what data we're looking for, what data we don't have based on our caseload. Um, I do wish we could have a little bit more demographic information of, um, without compromising uh, patients' privacy. Because I think that you would find that most of these things are attri- are not attributed. To somebody working on construction or landscaping, which a lot of the work's done outside. So. That was a long rant, but that's how I'm feeling. Matt?
Yeah, Dawn, you just said that it wasn't attributed, but then you went on to say that we didn't know, we wish we knew what it was attributed to. If you know what it's attributed to. Tell us. We may, we'd feel more comfortable, but we don't know. And, and it's also. You know, if we haven't done the tracing, we're not shared the tracing and we don't know whether it was picked up, you know, at the. You know, going to Cumbes or the, uh, the Stop and Shop or wherever. I mean, part of, when we did the first. Uh, one which I didn't agree, I voted for it, but I was pushing for control of travel heat to here and on the island. And that was to lower the risk. That was to allow more people to work all over the island more safely. By having that, you know, having them eat on site and, and that didn't happen. You know, so, so we, and we don't know. We haven't gone far enough. According to epidemiologists, we've gone, haven't gone far enough to know what the impact of those changes are yet. Truly. We'll know it, you'll know it soon. And so, so anyway, that's just a couple of points. And I'm not trying to slow this down. I would like. You know, to do this, but we need to do it safely.
Kristin?
I was just gonna comment that I think that we're all getting to the point where we're letting the process really frustrate us and. I did, I'm just wondering how we could move this forward. It's, is there more comments from the board or? You know, Dawn suggested that we just line up with the governor. Is that something that any of us would consider? Or is that just pure frustration that we're trying, we're trying to get through this and we're not really sure how to?
Rita?
Uh, I just wanted to comment, I meant to do earlier, that I'm, have been more comfortable with the four um, that Jason's been talking about. Specifically and based on some conversations that I've had with, with builders that I know, but you know, by no means is it a, a broad spectrum. Um, but I, you know, would take time to contemplate Christie's comments, Paul's comments, et cetera. On, and Steve's comments on that larger number. Um, but as of right now, I'd be more comfortable with the four.
Okay, so I mean, I am hearing that, that your board is generally supportive of an interim step. And. I guess that we will go, go back to. Sending these orders to the full Board of Health. They'll have the next few days to review them. They'll have a meeting on Wednesday. We'll have a joint meeting Wednesday night. At the beginning of our meeting and then they can step off. Um, they probably don't wanna sit through a whole meeting. Um, and then maybe they'll have a follow-up meeting the next, on Thursday, um, or s- something like that. But um. Is that where we're at? Do we wanna go over the landscaping quickly? And I mean, I, I do have a question. I mean, i- is there a way to get some. Demographic information in regard to the cases that we have locally beyond what we've already heard? And I mean, part of my information is not through general channels of how, how we know who has it and who doesn't. I mean, is there a state mandate?
I'm waiting for Roberto to respond. They're the keeper of the information.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I saw you undo your microphone. Um, so.
He might be on.
There is twelve um, cases, so I can probably go through Maven and see what I can find and. Provide aggregate numbers from what I can get, but um, I do have to do some data mining to get that. So it looks like I'm probably gonna be using this weekend to write up some sort of a report that I can get to you guys for next week.
Thank you. Okay, um, Jeff, do you wanna go over quick um, landscaping phase two?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, not a lot of changes from phase one, a, a couple of things. Uh, just to kinda go over from the start. Some of this was based upon. Um, I reviewed all of our kind of previous discussions for other issues that had come up. Um, and then obviously doing a lot of inspections and getting a lot of questions. And kind of contacts to the landscape community have tried to um, take those into consideration and putting this together. Um, again, we put it together, I would say fairly quickly, but fairly quickly. Um, so there's only one really significant new activity from phase one to phase two. Is we've included pool opening. Um, we had gone back and gone through some of the records and minutes. And it has come up a couple of times and I know there is a concern about uh, having pools that are full of water. Especially as the water is getting warmer and the temperatures are getting warmer and some concerns for algo growth or potential pests or. Uh, insects and, and those kinds of things. Um, so dealing with that was the only new activity. Um, we put in a process specific, and I know Rita mentioned it earlier, in our uh. Our application process to allow for people to specifically apply for a project that's related to. Uh, maintaining the safety sanitation or essential operation of residences that may not already be outlined of the included activities. Um, and have kind of a procedure to review those, um, do a site inspection and kind of go through and issue a determination if that work. Um, is permissible as landscaping work within there. And then the only real changes procedure wise that we've put in for a phase two. Is um, we took a little different approach to the worker number. Um, we've increased the workers to four uh, per job site with the exception of. Lots that are under five thousand square feet. We're still recommending that two workers. So sites a little more lot area constrained to keep that number a little bit lower, but then for larger sites. Uh, being able to get up to four individuals. Um, and then we're also. Um, just based on, on a little bit of personal observation of driving around and seeing things and seeing how everyone's operating. Um, allowing two people per vehicle as long as PPE is being, being used by both people in the vehicle. Uh, while they're traveling together. Other than that, um. We didn't really have any significant changes from phase one, just that the number changed, that new activity. Uh, in the vehicle change and then the application process is kind of what we're looking at for phase two.
Rita?
Um, I was just wondering if there was one more or if that, I don't remember it from the original, the number, the new number five. Um, any person or company who violates this order, who conducts work outside of the scope, that one, is that new?
Um. In the application procedure, Rita, sorry, I'm.
Um, it is in the enforcement. It's number, it's the new number five in enforcement. Basically saying that if you violate this, you may be deemed ineligible to conduct any further landscaping work.
Yeah, that was originally part of the application process for there. I, I think that could use some fine tuning. Um, but that was related to that specific application process for specific. Kind of one-time project base, that it was a, a system where if you. Applied for a project and went above and beyond the scope to make the site safe or did additional work. That you wouldn't be eligible to reapply into that program. Um, but I think we can get that language straightened out for discussion, certainly.
Do you have another question, Rita?
No.
Anybody else? Matt?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the uh, report that you gave us today, Jeff, outlining what's going on. I think that's helpful. Uh, and I think that this is sort of, is slow enough. I, I think this is, you know, sort of. Yep, it's, it's a slight loosening. I'm, I'm fine with it.
Steve, do you have anything you wanna add or ask about for clarity? As you're gonna be working with your board.
Yeah, I know, I, I've read this over a little bit before I, and. You know, there's no huge significant changes like he's, like Jeff said and, yeah, it looks pretty good.
Gary?
I'm just wondering if um, if this isn't the opportunity for the town to pull in a business consultant. And uh, a- to help lay out what Rita suggested and I was alluding to. To put these business uh, concerns in low median to high risk. And uh, and pull in some business leaders that uh, you know, that, that run a good majority of the industries in the town and involve them in the discussion of. What does safety look like and, and what does personal protective gear look like and what does the size of establishments look like? Um, to give you an opportunity to see what the thinking is collectively and then to be able to look at. Uh, demonstrated risk through Roberto's eyes, uh, through epidemiologists. Uh, because I think there's a lot of voices that wanna be at the table uh, to help guide an understanding of, you know. Uh, working in the same direction together to be able to uh, to move into the future. Uh, so you can understand all the parts and pieces, but um, without that. Without a, a, a schedule, without something in Visio that you can look at. I, I see you grappling with the parts and pieces and it's challenging. It's challenging for me to, to hear. I, I wish, you know, I had the, the time to, to lead something like that. Uh, for you, but uh, but I've got a hospital to run. But I would think that there's talent in this town that could help if you're so inclined to consider that.
Uh, Kristin?
Yeah, I think that that's what the Economic Recovery Task Group is going to. Um, be trying to work on is seeing how each industry can open and what the risk will be and I think it will include health. Um, but just a comment about the landscaping is that I'm in favor of this. I, I spoke to the landscaping companies and these were kind of two of the provisions that. They felt were very restrictive and unfair and I think it's, it's a good way to meet in the middle of letting them continue to work and not fully reopen.
Rita?
Um, I just wanna comment uh, that um, I think actually hiring outside, I think it's a facilitator really in a way. I think that the Economic Work Group. Um, I think um, would definitely benefit from specifically including the Department of Health, but I think there needs to be someone to facilitate. Um, uh, you know, this group of um, stakeholders, volunteers and um, staff. I, I think that again, this isn't necessarily our skill set. It's why we hired someone to guide us on our strategic plan. To me, it's the same. Same, same kind of idea. You need someone to bring all these different um, perspectives and groups together. Um, so I think the Economic Recovery Group is great, but I think it needs, um, I think it could benefit from uh, someone with the skills to facilitate.
Uh, Janet, did you have a comment on that?
Uh, that's the nature of the report that I'll give you in a few minutes where it's my turn, but we have hired a facilitator. It happens to be Julia Novak who will be helping us coordinate and facilitate this process going forward and I. Feel confident and I think that Jason and Christie would affirm that feeling as well. I think we're on a good path.
Thank you. Um, when, when's the next meeting? When, when's the next meeting on that? I know that that's coming up, coming up on our agenda.
We're going to start a process of roundtables next week. With the different economic sectors to collect information guided by some questions that. Kristi, Jason and I prepared and that. Julia then amplified to get on the same page with everybody and to collect information that the task force that can then. Can then review to, to figure out how we're going to move forward, but it's always been. In my mind, and I haven't really talked in detail with this about Kristi and Jason, that it would. Of course be guided by the medical data that was coming forward about, and, and the governor's orders about when we could move forward. So we're trying to find a way to get businesses the opportunity to participate in this, and I think we've got a good solution today. Worked on it all afternoon with Julia's team. And Kristi to get this thing lined up and the train on a track and moving forward.
Do we think we could marry all of these people who want to be a part of the economics from the different industries with the epidemic? Epidemiological advisement that some people want to volunteer, could we bring these, these, all of these people together into the same working group? It seems like that bringing the, the, the medical data research and. The economic pieces into the same, kind of into the same room would.
I think at this point, we're just trying to collect information from the sectors. Next week and then the following, we could be the time to bring those things together.
Matt?
Yeah, I was going to say something similar. I think it may be a hair premature, I think. But I thi- and, and the other part is there's a lot of talent out here. Who could, you know, I don't, not sure you could have one facilitator with the 15 or 17 different groups you have. There's a lot of talent here that, you know, men and women who have done this. In large corporations and know how to get this stuff done, you know, similar to the people I'm going to talk about at the end. And there were a lot of people offering to help. And I think it would, you know, we need to pull this all together and be in agreement and be, you know, and, and do it right. And so I think, you know, I think it's a little premature, but I think they all have to be melded together. We have to look at what the, what the. Sort of the scenarios are and then like risk analyze those. Look at which ones make the most sense and which, what strategies we have to do. So I, I think it would work.
I think Jason and Kristi both raised their hands.
I just got back Shannon on us really, you know, digging into these roundtables and, and talking to the. The different sectors, people need to be heard, you know, we need to be listening to all these. All the different, the different parts of the business community. And we'll do that with, with facilitator. And then once we gather a lot of this. And with the governor's next order coming. Then bringing that in with, you know, these other groups with, with data is a, is a smart way forward.
Yeah, I was just going to come the same thing. I'm on the Economic Recovery Group for the Cape Cod region. And they have health and epidemiologists and everybody on that. And so that's something that I, I hope that we would consider and I'd be pushing for. But it's important to have all of us work on the guidelines for reopening. So we can't really dictate what businesses are doing when we don't understand their business. And then we can't also understand the health side. That's not our specialty. So we really need to bring the two together.
Okay, I mean, we're getting a little bit off topic because that's a little further in the agenda. But we should just try and, try and move things along a bit. I know Rita had to step off. Did we? Did we have anything additional to talk about in regard to restaurants? I think there was going to be a, a working draft provided for tonight, but I didn't see one. So ma- maybe that's for next week.
One was submitted.
It's in there.
Is it in there? Okay, sorry.
If you look at the bookmarks, it's in there.
Must have missed it. Did, did you guys want to comment on any of that or is it just kind of out there for public consumption in the packet? Jason?
Yeah, I, I think it's for public consumption. I think it shows up that we're working on it and the health department, Roberto are talking to people. And they can see this draft versus the one I was in last week, which what I was going off of. And there's been a lot of changes and it shows that we are listening and kind of a best guess phase one and two. And that's what we want to do more of with this, with this task force with Kristi and, and Janet.
I want to give a huge shout out to Amy Baxter. She did the bulk of this, so she's been really great.
Thank, thank you. Thank you to Amy. And I mean, again, with all of these industries, the reason we have so much focus on landscaping and construction is because these are the only two things we're more restrictive on. Than the governor's directives. And all of these other industries were waiting on this guidance that will hopefully come out sometime before May 18th. So that people can start. Some, some type of planning and understanding. So what's, what's currently being worked on are. Estimates of what, what might be coming based on what other states are doing and so forth, I think. Any questions on the restaurant end of things? And I mean, this applies to all other industries like for personal care services and so forth. Shall we go back to the economic impact and maybe we should turn on public comments again, one, one more time in regard to the COVID and guess there's anything?
It wasn't turned off.
It was never turned off? Okay, sorry about that. But if anyone wants to submit a further comment in regards to the economic impact, is there anything actually more to add on this or more discussion that we want to have? Review of membership?
Well, the sector list that I, that was in the packet has been expanded because since that went out, we've heard from. Childcare, entertainment and personal services that they weren't on that list. So we're expanding the roundtable process to include their voices. We still have to work on the membership of the larger task force and kind of waiting some direction from here about how large that should be. I, I mean, I think that actually Jason and Kristi probably should speak to this as the staff person. I'm staffing it, but I'm giving you the details that I know about. I, I feel pretty confident that the way we've set up these roundtables and we can always be flexible in who we include in them and add another one if we need to. We're going to hear from every economic sector of the community to find out what their issues are. And try to come up with some common guidelines that will of course be guided by the timeline of the virus.
Thoughts? Jason, Kristi? Jason?
Yeah, I think there's, there's a lot, there's a little bit of worry out there that there's someone's particular voice is going to be heard within each sector. And I think that's why we're going to do the roundtables. And having, you know, facilitator involved that will be taking all the notes and synthesizing all the notes. So when we get together in a, in a, in that future meeting where all the sectors are together, right? And we're trying that, that cross pollination and sharing of ideas. It's all going to be there in front of us. So no one's going to be, no one idea is going to be missing. So if we have one representative for each sector, there, it's, everyone will still be, how do I say? All the voices will still be heard. But we, we just can't have, you know, 200 people on a, on that, that bigger meeting, right? We got to kind of narrow it down.
Kristi, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just, I think we've made a lot of progress this week. I think at first we were trying to put together who should be on the task force from each industry. And we kind of reversed and felt like we should be listening to the industries first and then try to put together that larger task force. So I think we're really moving in the right direction. And I know businesses are anxious to be heard and to get answers if we can provide any answers. And so I think this is a good first step of getting them involved. And I'm very happy that we've hired a facilitator because this was going to be a lot of work. And I think it really shows the commitment to the town to be a part of this process.
Thank you. Are there any public comments before we turn it off that need to be addressed?
Well, there are quite a number. There's quite a few about the members on the group. And what the. Group is really going to be doing. There's several comments about just go back to a state order. I'm not sure I can really read through every single one of them, but lots of various comments. I, I. I, I don't even know how to, I see now, Jason.
Why don't we, I guess we'll turn them off at this point. And maybe there are some questions we can get back to at a later time. And. So I mean, we do have public comment for the items not on the COVID-19 agenda. Should we turn that on for a couple of minutes? Sorry, I guess turn it back on just in case there's another public comment on something different and may want to. Leave that on in case any, the next item is. This is the discussion in regard to the parking hearing that we had had scheduled. And I think this is whether the board wants to have, have a new public hearing scheduled. For any of the items related to parking. To really have that discussion now. I am concerned about getting public input properly in this format.
Madam Chair? When we were talking about this at the agenda meeting, the, the, so yes, we had, we had a hearing scheduled and everything happened and so we never got back to it. So lots of things have happened since then, which might be changing decisions possibly about how we want to go forward with this. But if we were going to do something like increase the parking fine from $25 to $50, we need to get those tickets ordered. And which means we need to have a public hearing and we're already behind on that. So I don't even know at this point if you want to proceed with it, but. There, there are things we're going to be doing anyway this summer that don't require any regulation changes, like using the LPR. The license plate readers. So the things will be happening, but that do not require. Any regulation change, but I don't think the public is going to really notice too much of it.
Yeah, I wanted to bring this back to the board since it's a, a big item on our strategic plan, but things have changed so significantly. I was kind of of the mindset, let's gather some data from this summer that will be a different summer than other summers and probably leave things alone. But I really did not want to make that decision without all of you. Matt?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping the existing rules and regulations. Keep the fee at $25. People are having a tough enough time already. And gather data, use the license plate readers and gather the data we need so that we can, you know, talk about this in the future.
Kristi, then Jason?
Yeah, I was going to say a similar comment that, you know, in an economic downturn, we don't really, I don't really want to be increasing the fee. But I do want us to be careful about how we interpret the data from this summer since it is going to be such a different summer. So I think it's good that we have the license plate readers and we start collecting. Maybe it'll show us some hotspots, but just in next year. I, I think we want to be careful. Data can be used against us and not for us. So just keeping that in our minds.
Thank you, Jason.
Matt took the words out of my mouth on pretty much everything. Get, you know, get the data, test that technology, keep it at 25. And not, not do too many changes for, for all the reasons that Livy said about public hearings and timeframes. I think that's the best way to move forward.
Okay, were there any?
Any motion?
Oh, sorry. Non-COVID related public comments. Oh, Steve, did you, were you saying something? Matt?
Do we, do we need a motion on that or just keep it as we all are in agreement?
Living?
Well, I, sometimes emotion is always better, but it seems like in this instance, the consensus is pretty good. We, we are not proceeding with the changes that were proposed at this time.
No, no public hearing to be scheduled. Were there any public comments that were unrelated to COVID-19 issues?
There are some about the parking. But now that you've done what you've done, that maybe those are not quite so.
So those are probably, because they were probably saying, don't do anything, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, okay, we're not doing anything. So everyone can, can be pleased with that. Jason?
I just want to double check. We're not doing the, the park and ride or anything at Two Fairgrounds Road. Behind there. Are we still planning on cleaning that up and preparing for it or do we take that off?
We're still trying to get the parking lot cleaned up. It's going to take possibly a little bit of a back burner. With, because lots of other things now, but I think we are not doing that park and ride program. Well, I mean, I don't know. You guys tell me.
I would say it's definitely delayed, but maybe it's not totally off the table for the summer. But I don't think there's going to be a whole, I don't know about the airport traffic. I don't know how much it's going to exist. I would say it's probably a little bit of a wait. And what do you guys think?
Yeah, I was going to say, wait and see, bring, you know, maybe talk about it at the end of May.
Kristi?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, maybe shortening it to July and August, but I think it, it will still be a service where. We all saw that that's a really congested part of the island and it, having that extended service is still needed.
Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking. And Matt, you good with that?
So basically revisit in like about a month?
Yeah, maybe right after May 18th, when we know where some other things are heading. Committee reports, do turn public comment off if it's not already. Anything? Matt?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to do this really quick. So what happened after our last meeting? I was contacted by Scott White. He said, you know, geez, I'm an epidemiologist and this, and what you're asking for is available. And, you know, here's a website and you can use this and you can, it's, you know, so many for 10,000, you can see. You know, you can really, you could figure this out. And at the same time, and this was like two days ago, at the same time, there's been some Maticat resident, my. Monomoy residents who have reached out asking to help and they would like to do some of the public relations work that Jason's talking about. Once we figure out what we're doing, they're willing to raise money. They have their. They have their annual or one of their meetings for their group this Saturday, and so they offered to help. And one of them is, you know, is a doctor and knows his stuff. And so we kind of put them together just to see, you know, Jason and I were on the call, Roberto was there. And it was partly to sort of test. You know, is, is this something even to bring to the board? And it was partly to, you know, sort of brainstorm and we came out of that with, you know, sort of. You know, I came out of it confident that, that they could help. In the meantime, I've heard from another person who reached out to remain and they're willing to help as well in some of these regards. And so I just think, you know, and I shared Scott White's paper with you guys yesterday or today. And he, he just wrote, wrote up something really quick from his perspective. I'm not sure that's shared by 100% by Roberto or 100%. But anyone else, but I think, you know, it, it was, it was very, it's a very positive meeting. There's a lot of people who care about this island and, you know, have different skill sets. In facilitation, in business, in epidemiology. And I would like to think that we can use those skill sets to all be on the same page. And to keep the island safe and moving the business forward.
So what do we think about trying to, to meld? Some of this potential advisement in with the, with the committee that's already been established? Is that kind of where the direction that makes sense? Just, just trying to figure out how this is all going to function and what the timeframe is and what, what we're looking to accomplish?
I'll let Jason answer that first.
Kristi raised her hand.
Jason, do you want to go first? I was just going to say, I think it would be important to bring that perspective in, and with Roberto being part of that group. And maybe he'd be on the Economic Recovery, he could bring all that information to the table.
Yeah, I, I think it, it was a, it was a, it was a good meeting to see. How much people. um, how much people want to help. And um, you know, it was really like, it, it really started, how can we help? And of course, I went right into education, education, education. How can you help us educate, brand? All these things to keep us safe. And um, I really, I really, I really appreciated that, that there was willingness to, to do that. I think what you're saying, Christie, is um, you know, Roberto kind of heading this and bringing it to um, whatever we're doing after a week or so, right? And then trying to combine them a little bit. I think that makes sense. But I think it has to come through Roberto, like somebody, you know, through the town and he can funnel it and, and and um, so just a lot of different information coming from here.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to help and I'd be happy to head that up. Um, it's, it makes sense. So um, yeah, we can, uh, what would be timeframe that you're looking something for something from me so that I don't end up accidentally blowing through a deadline that I didn't know?
I think Christie, Kirby from all, I think we'll have the roundtables done next week and start to synthesize our information and have it for the eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth of May. Um, so I think we'll, we'll have a good idea of what all the sectors are saying and their challenges and the protocols and ideas that they're bringing in from different states and then from their industries.
Yep, that sounds good.
Matt?
The one thing I would like to have, uh, the select board, staff, Board of Health uh, and the public view is I would like at some point, uh, Roberto's, that group to you know, sort of explain how, you know, how, just show us pandemic math, show us how this, you know, how this will, how this works. Because right now I think there's a lot of sort of wishful thinking on it because everyone has their own opinion. And I would like to have people explain it because once, you know, I could, I'm, I'm pretty good with numbers. I like numbers. Uh, and once I was walked through it, I kind of understood it a lot better. And I think that would be uh, very helpful for everybody. We're making decisions with, with sort of, you know, one and a half hands to tie behind our backs.
Absolutely. It's uh, you're, you're asking us to give away all the epidemiologist secrets, the secret code. No, absolutely. We'll write something up and um, get some presentations and some modeling together. Um, we understand that definitely. Like you said, you're good with numbers, so you were able to grasp it a little bit easier. Most people are not. Um, and epidemiology is very numbers heavy. Uh, so we're gonna, we'll have to do some modeling and, and get some things together and map this out for you and get this to you.
Um, do we have a clear direction on what, what we're looking for to be modeled? Just, just trying to get a handle on this.
Yeah, I would, I would leave that to Roberto. I would leave that to, to the guys doing the, you know, work. And if anyone has any questions, you know, that need, that they'd have, I would, I'd run that through them too. Part of what, what's interesting, these guys had already met with an Intec data platform and they've already got, that's where we've got the, you know, actual data of, you know, how many people come, what days and from where. That can all be, you know, that can all help us. That, that's very uh, important. And so you, you put, you can push all that into, into the analysis and come out with sort of help us make the right uh, policy decisions and make right choices. You know, we, I hear everyone say, we've got to be with the state, we've got to, maybe we do. But until we've sort of really analyzed it, maybe we don't. Maybe there's something we could do that's slightly different that would keep us, you know, keep us in really good stead through this thing. This isn't, you know, I, we started out thinking this was going to be five days or two weeks. That was some of the first messaging. And you know, it could be, it could be a year, a year and a half of some type of, uh, some type of restrictions. And you know, this is a new normal and it's gonna, you know, it's going to take, you know, sort of, we're not going to be business as usual as quickly as I think people would like it to be, including myself.
Is, is the board looking for this modeling prior to making decisions on the limitations that we currently have in place in orders five and six? Is part of what I, I mean, what, or is this for things loo- looking beyond when we have the information from the governor that applies to other industries? Jason?
Yeah, I think you hit it there at the end. Again, Matt, you kind of alluded to it is, you know, the governor's going to come out with phase one and phase two. We might um, want to restrict further. We might want to go the other way, just like look at retail, right? It doesn't work here for what the state did. So there might, we just don't know. But having, you know, Roberto, giving Roberto access to data to help us make decisions after, once we know what the state comes out with, to guide us will be very, very helpful.
Christie?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on Matt's comments and using the data platform, I think stats one oh one is garbage in, garbage out. We want to be careful to not use a typical July of twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen when, you know, people are coming from all over. What we're consistently hearing in the travel industry is people are only going to come within driving distance. So I don't think we're going to see as many, you know, far away visitors. And we want to make sure that we're modeling of fifty percent reduction or sixty percent reduction, not saying we're going to have the you know, million plus people that came to the island one year because it's not going to be typical.
Yeah, I would say even our own traveling has been severely limited with those trips on and off that are normal. I mean, I, most people I know, their kids are not going to camp this year off island. And I mean, there's, there's just, there's so many things that are so different. I'm just, I, I'm, I'm a little bit worried, like Christie said, about having the right data, the right, the, the right access. It's, this whole thing is a guess nationwide. And I mean, the hospital gave us some very alarming numbers at the beginning of this of where we could go that did not transpire. And that, you know, is certainly, I'm sure attributed to some of our actions, but is it fully attributed to our actions? Is it? Is a lot of it attributed to just our being thirty miles out to sea and being under a stay at home order? Um, so I, I just want to be, be careful about how we're basing all of our decisions and, and what, where we're getting data from because there's so much guessing. Matt?
Uh, and, and the things, the concerns you guys have both, both raised are concerns that are addressed by competent epidemiologists. They're, you know, they, they know there's going to be fewer people here this year, year. The, the models that are being used have, so you know, are based on social distancing, no social distancing, uh, lockdown. They, there's different levels that they put in here. And I think that, you know, I, I think some of those uh, will be helpful. If you do scenario planning and you have uh, various scenarios, you'll know which ones have less risk, which risk, which ones make more sense. Which choices give you the, which policy decisions give you the best chance of having a successful economy and a safe island? I mean, those are the things that we really need to knock this around a little bit because, you know, and so.
Christie?
Yeah, just a follow up comment. I, I fully agree. And I just always want to be careful with data. If we are saying right now that you know, a ton of our populate, summer population is coming from a hotspot. What type of policy decisions are we going to do? Are we going to start saying people from New York can't come? Like, I just, I want us to be careful about how we're interpreting things and then being so matter of fact of data is going to drive decisions. Um, I think like Dawn said, sometimes it can go the other way. So I just, just want to put that comment out.
We, you know, we could, we could go on forever. I'm not, and, and I, this will be my last comment. Uh, I think, you know, sort of one of the big things we've talked about is the churn. What, what is the impact of that? What changes could we make? Well, you know, I think the one industry that, you know, I had a lot of calls from people that we haven't talked about or haven't met with and we're going to is real estate. And there's a, that's, you know, I think it's about twenty percent of our houses were short, you know, last year of the total houses on the island were used as uh, in the short term rentals, they paid taxes to the state. That's an under, you know, undercount. Uh, and so those, you know, maybe there's things that they can do that will keep them, you know, we know sort of what restaurants and things are going to happen, what things should happen there. Maybe there are, maybe if we meld the decisions that will work for them with the data, we could come up with something that works better. And I don't have the answer because we haven't done that work yet. But I don't want, you know, I know that there's, you know, there's some sort of, some people who think, geez, you know, we're going to be okay. And you know, we're, we're going to be back to normal. Back to normal.
Anything further? Christie?
Related to data, um, just clarification on moving forward. So both the landscaping and construction is going to be reviewed on Wednesday by Board of Health and then coming to us again for final review.
I think that Board of Health is going to weigh in earlier in the day on Wednesday. And then we're going to meet jointly at the beginning of our meeting on Wednesday. And then they'll, you know, there may be a few tweaks and they'll make a final determination on Thursday. Is that, that what we came up with? I think Steve's shaking his head, yes. I think Roberto, are you good? Okay. Um, so that all is scheduled. Okay. So I think that that is the plan. And then, I mean, whatever gets decided does need a couple of days for implementation. Um, so I mean, maybe it would be able to be implemented on Friday, but I know that there needs to be translating done and so forth to get the word out. So they had asked for some time to be able to, to do that and post everything. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Agreed.
All those in favor by roll call? Christie Ferantella?
Aye.
Matt C?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Um, I think Rita's dropped off. So Dawn Holgate, aye. Thank you all. Have a good night. Have a good weekend.
Thanks, Dawn.